I'm going to call the Concord School Committee to order. It is 6 o'clock. We are, if you look at our agenda, we are shaking things up in all the ways today. We, first of all, are starting with Concord. We are going to try as much as possible to try to get as many presenters towards the front of the agenda so that people can leave and then we're the ones who are stuck here late at night since we're here no matter what. So we're going to start with CPS this morning, or this, this morning, this evening first, and then we will move to the region and go into Angel's update on special education and whatnot. And then we will do a lot of our business towards the end, so like the consent agenda, correspondence, liaisons, all of that will come later on in the agenda.
Love that.
Yeah, so. That is what we're going to try. We are open to feedback if people like it or don't like it. So we're going to start off with Mr. Sparks from Thoreau on the Thoreau Playground Committee. Lori, you want to?
Yeah, I'll just queue it up. So we've been meeting with the Playground Committee and the Playground Designer, and Justin's here to give you some updates. They're about ready to hit the ground running on fundraising. So we wanted to be sure you previewed some of the changes. Some are bigger than others, but just didn't want you to not know what was happening as this really becomes a public conversation. And I know the group is really excited to start fundraising and seems to have some leads already, so I'll turn it over to Justin from there.
Thanks, Lori, and thank you, Carrie, for rearranging the agenda. Much appreciated. My kids thank you from the other room. And I want to thank the committee for giving me a few minutes to talk tonight about our playground project, Thoreau's Backyard. I know you have a full agenda with some budget and spend updates, so I'll try to be brief. So as you know, this project is part of a larger campus improvement plan that was created last year. That includes green space, which we apprised you of at an earlier meeting, rec space, erosion control, and parking. So I do want to highlight that under Lori's leadership and guidance, we've been able to explore some creative funding avenues and sources, and fingers crossed that we get some of the CPC money for the green space and soccer fields. So it's really exciting to be a part of all this great work. I think in, you know, three to five years or so, the campus will look very different, and it's fun to, it's fun to build something. The playground will be funded in part by an estate gift, I mean, one of $200,000, and then the rest will be hopefully funded through a robust campaign, which we're poised to start. So the design, which I'll run through in a second, I have a few just really simple brief slides. So you have a visual. These were all based on student feedback. We did some surveys last year, and we used that to create, with our vendor, Joe McMahon from Multiply, an initial design, and it's gone through several iterations to make sure we get it right. But the team was really committed to making sure we have a strong design, something that our kids and community will love. So what you see, there's certainly room for adjustments as we get, as we get feedback. And I should say too, Joe's been very patient with us and is currently working for free for us, so is more than willing to adjust as we move forward. Do have to give a huge thank you to the folks on the committee, Carrie included, who sits with us every week on Friday morning, you know, and all of the other folks who have given up their time to make sure that this project moves forward. Their dedication has been key to getting us to this point. So let me see if I can screen share here, and I can show you some of our, I'll show you some of the designs, some of the images from Multiply, and then share with you a very exciting, some of the work that our Student Playground Group has been doing, and then give just a brief fundraising update, if that works for the committee. So I want to see if I can screen share here. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Great. Okay. There are a lot of tabs, so just, I apologize.
There is a whole personality study on how many tabs you have.
Oh, my God.
I can only handle about four before I have to shut down, so I don't know what this does about Mr. Sparks.
It's a huge problem. I understand.
I'd like to see that study.
So just to start, here's our logo, the project Thoreau's Backyard, grounds for play. Everything from the logo to the motto to the title. Colors were all intentionally chosen collaboratively with our group. And I think really what's meaningful for me and for the community are the, you know, the sort of the rock-looking things stacked up, you know, emphasizing nature with the color and the power of connectedness. You notice that the rocks are actually connected to each other. At Thoreau, we really believe deeply that our students, you know, community, our families need to feel connected to Thoreau in as many ways as possible, and we hope that this backyard project will be one of those ways. So here you, you have an over, an overview. I think we see all of the different elements on the play space. Some of the feedback we got from our kids was they wanted, they wanted space to be able to run as well, so we kind of spaced out all of the equipment in different pods. So just so you, so you know, the feedback from our, our Thoreau students last year was they wanted to be able to run, they wanted places to hide. I'm not sure how Lori felt about that one, but so thus the houses. To hide, imaginative play, they wanted to be able to climb, to swing, to slide, to jump, and to spin, and to quote one of our fourth graders from last year, to spin real fast if possible. So I think with this design, we've achieved most of that. And like I said, it is, you know, this is iterative, and, you know, these pieces, as our vendor says, can be changed out as we need, as the feedback comes in.
That's smart, too.
Yeah. And you'll notice the surfacing, we have a combination of grass, of rubberized surfacing, and those provide paths to the different elements. That rubber surfacing is very expensive. We could have spent a quarter of a million dollars on that alone, given the space we have, so we needed to be mindful of that, and always considering the play value that each element brings to the, to the project. And then we have mulch, mulch there, and the mulch we're using here, you know, the volume of it is, I'd say, fairly comparable to what we have to do, if not a little bit more, to the current upper playground. So it might be, in terms of maintenance, a little bit of a higher cost, but not much.
That makes sense, and the picture is mulch.
So we slide some climbing elements here, the place to hide, a cargo net. In the background, you see some rocks there with netting to allow kids to climb and jump and play.
Can I just stop you for one second?
Sure.
The tan area, because Bob kind of alluded to it, is that mulch or is that rubberized surface?
The path.
The tan is mulch.
The picture isn't quite, yeah.
Yeah, so the rubberized, is that the white, and then the green is grass? Or is the green also rubberized?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
They were big on swings, so we got a set of 10 swings, and you'll notice that two of them are accessible. We want to make sure that all of our students are able to enjoy, so the paths allow access to each element, and the swings allow our kids to enjoy too, regardless of mobility. And here you see, kind of the centerpiece is an element I'm really excited about. It's a large rope climbing structure. You see to the left there, that is a zip line. Up to the back, monkey bars, some musical elements, which our student committee is working on right now, spinning elements, and then some additional climbing structures. Then a little bit closer here. These playhouses are slightly more expensive than we initially thought, so those, those may be traded out at some point, depending. So they're, they serve as a placeholder right now, but they certainly look like fun, especially for some of our younger students. And there's a close-up of the rope climbing structure. So not, not too high, just high enough for them to bring in some element of risk, but if they fall, they have a relatively soft padded landing with the mulch chips. And then you see a little bit closer, the zip line and the monkey bars. We added two spinning elements. Our vendor tells us they do go pretty fast, so I think it'll be well-received by our, by our students. And before I go to the next part, any questions about the design thus far? As I, as I said, these elements can be traded in or out, but you get the idea of the concept and some of the thought process behind the different play areas we chose.
I have a quick question slash comment, just more so on the little spaces of grass in between all the mulch. I just, like, that's really hard to maintain and to grow grass like that, and then you get a lot of mixed, like, mulch and grass, and then crabgrass, and then Thoreau has a problem with a lot of sun and no water. So I'm just wondering, why not make it, I mean, the pods look great in the picture, but to keep it aesthetically pleasing, would you want to just do one big mulch area, or am I overthinking it maybe?
No, that's good feedback.
Yeah.
And I, you know, we ran this by our facilities director. He indicated that as long as the grassy areas weren't under anything, that it could be fairly easily mowed or weed-whacked. But I would think, to answer your question, I would think that those could just be replaced by either the rubberized surface or the woodchips. That's a good question.
I got pretty ambitious in my yard, and it, like, doesn't look good pretty quickly, and then it's just really hard to maintain, so just.
Yeah.
And then my other question, personal experience is, you know, I've driven to every single playground in Concord, act in, especially during COVID, and there's a lot of cool, you know, play structures, so it sounds like the kids had some input on what structures you wanted. But to me, it's kind of cool, as a parent driving around, like, getting some unique kind of elements that you can't find in other parks in Concord. And I know we have a zip line, for example, and I know we had one of those giant climbing pyramids or whatever at Sandborne, but I think that was taken down, so.
It's there.
It's still there, okay.
We put it back up. We just moved.
So again, maybe a ramble question slash comment is just, I think it's cool if you have some unique elements that draw people in on the weekends to Thoreau, that you, that wouldn't come to other parks, but.
That's good feedback.
Just a question.
Yeah, great feedback. And if you see something, you know, that looks interesting, I've actually, through this process, I've taken my daughter, she's the playground expert, to a number of playgrounds, including the Carlisle one, which kind of served as our inspiration.
Carlisle's everything.
Literally everything.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
I have a question. The way that I love seeing how this is expansive and spaced out sort of separately, is part of that rationale a financial one insofar as you can then replace these things ad hoc? They're not all one big structure. Could that be like an unintended sort of effect?
It might be an unintended benefit. Most of this is because of the vision of the committee.
Yeah.
And it's some of the student feedback, but this committee's had a lot of aspirational ideas, and some of it was to create this open space that really melded into the campus and the woods and the natural environment around it. So there's another phase to this, which we aren't sharing tonight, which is really about the landscaping and the walking areas and some other things that the committee's also hoped will be able to do as part of the rest of the campus project. So there's a, they called it Thoreau's Backyard, which really was meant to be like this really active environment that, that is all intentional.
And I look at this and think, you know, these playground projects, whether in Concord or Carlisle or anywhere, are so challenging to fund, and a lot of it is because the structures are so expansive and large, and this is a conglomerate, like a conglomeration of many smaller structures. I would think there could be some benefit to this, so.
Yeah, you may be right. I mean, the price tag right now is still up in the half a million dollar range.
No, I know, but I'm saying like to replace one of these.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Five years if it breaks, so.
Yeah, we won't, they're not all intertwined the way other playgrounds are sometimes.
That's important.
Yeah, no, that wasn't the reason it happened that way, but it might be a benefit.
Great.
So just some feedback on the rubberized. I think there will be significant community concerns about PFAS, them containing PFAS and being close to the wetlands and the river.
Delia K. is coming out Thursday to walk the site with us, and here are the plans and.
Because it's.
Close to the Natural Resource Commission, so I think we're on top of that.
Because there's peer research that shows that there's no safe rubberized, it's all has PFAS in it.
So Delia's coming out, so we aren't working in isolation on it.
Right, but I think it would be good to socialize this with the greater community, the design, yeah, and maybe approach the Climate Action Board, because I know they will have concerns and just.
Yeah, and unfortunately, there really isn't another option for the accessibility needs that we have, so we're going to have to make decisions based on certain priorities.
I actually had a question on accessibility. When you look at the swings, so you have those two accessible swings, is there any thought to rubberizing that area, just to give better access there? And looking at some of the elements, you know, specifically if you're in a wheelchair, which elements can you actually access?
Yeah, the thought was to be able to get around and get close enough to each, you know, but that, no, that is a good point.
Yeah, this like is a schematic.
Totally, totally.
There's lots of input to be had, for sure.
And I think also Cynthia, on the like socialization of it, rubber, all of the different aspects of it, everything, that's exactly what we're doing, and this is the first step in doing that.
Yep, right.
So they are launching a blog, the committee is working on, they're going to be doing a big fundraising effort, which I know Justin is going to get into, but this is the launch of that socialization process.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think it's really cool. Huge improvement.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Is that, last question, is one of these little, are these replica of Thoreau's cabin, or are they more?
Yeah, you got it.
Yes, it kind of is.
Well, we do have, so part of the estate, the donation, is to include West Concord history, so something there will have some thematic attachments to the history of the town, which we're actually, we've gotten really excited about that.
Yeah, that's cool. Yeah. You know, and as Lori mentioned, we're hoping to do some landscaping, you know, moving forward, and as we brought the CPC in, to look at some of the green space enhancements, including potentially a soccer field up on where the current upper playground is. You know, they had asked about tying into the trails and all of that, so really exciting opportunities, you know, in the future, but we're focused on this right now and moving forward with this design. Awesome. Great. All right. So I hope this works. We were struggling with how we get students involved in the process beyond the survey that they took initially to give us feedback on what they wanted. So we have placeholders built in right now for some musical elements, which was, which was, which was big, and we decided that this group of, well, they were then third graders, we selected them last year, they're fourth graders now, we've got a group of, I believe, eight of them, who are helping us in a number of different ways. They're kind of a go-between, between the committee and their peers, giving us feedback on the design, which they've done already, they're very vocal, which is great, and they're helping us specifically decide on some of the musical elements, so they'll have some control over what actually gets built into their playground. And we chose third graders intentionally so that they could see the project to its completion, hopefully, and be fifth graders and enjoy it. So they have a brief, minute and a half-long introductory video, which I'd love to share with you right now, if that's okay.
Go for it.
This works.
You know the audio?
Oh, darn.
Is the audio working?
No.
No.
Hmm.
If you optimize it for the video, sometimes if you check that box, it helps.
It might not.
Too many tabs open.
I think it's a part of the MM thing, too, that we struggle with this sometimes.
Hmm. I wonder if I, if I drop the link in the chat with that workler?
The chat isn't on, so.
Well, darn, okay. Well, I'd be happy to, I'll send this to.
You could try it. It might be better, but it might not, because I've played videos here and I've had to remember.
Yeah.
You came up with the music.
I'll play it, maybe I'll just play it, and if the volume doesn't come, then. Is that any better?
Here we go. I'm Simon and I'm from Miss.
Yes, thank you, we're good.
I'm Robbie and I'm from Miss the Doors class. I'm.
You can hear that okay now?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, great, okay, perfect. All right, I'll start it over then.
Here we go. I'm Simon and I'm from Miss the Doors class. I'm Robbie and I'm from Miss the Doors class. I'm Gaochum and I'm from Mrs. Burns class. I'm Stella and I'm from Miss the Doors class. I'm Madison and I'm from Mrs. Burns class. I'm Archie and I'm from Mrs. Burns class. I'm Leo and I'm from Mrs. Dylan's class. I'm Eli and I'm from Miss Burns class. And where are the playgrounds? I'm really excited to help build this new and amazing playground. I'm excited to filter through designs for the committee. Everyone in the school has an input to designing a playground. Our main focus is musical instruments. So we need a fundraiser to raise lots of money. One of our fundraisers that we came up with was the coin challenge, which allows students to vote for which musical instrument they want to use. And whichever one gets the most coins gets to be like the one that are going to be taken out. Gets to be the one that we're going to add to the new playground. Oh, my God. Now we're going to do.
Clever.
Great. Why would I try to explain it when the kids can do it much better? All right. So I'm going to stop. So you can see where the students are. We meet with them every Friday. Erin Sahatch, which has helped me put this, actually, she did the video herself, took the kids' footage and put together a really good product. So we meet together every Friday, hear their feedback, and, you know, we get to plan next steps in terms of the musical equipment, which is fun. So I'll just stop there. And then really just briefly with the fundraising, and it's getting dark here in my backyard, so I'm losing some light. So as you know, signage and recognition can be a powerful motivator for, you know, people considering large gifts, so having some sort of long-lasting visible acknowledgement of their generosity kind of enhances their sense of pride and connection to the project. So we're thinking about that as we talk through different ways to acknowledge them. So I just wanted to give you an overview. Ultimately, we'll want your feedback on these things. So similar to the Carlisle project, we hope that we can do donor names on fence posts, if you've seen that project at all. This fence post would be sort of a barrier between the new expanded parking and where the playground is. then for larger donations in the $5,000 to $50,000 range, giving the option of naming a particular element or bench or slide or piece of equipment. And then we're discussing the notion of a plaque that lists all of the donors for the project. So those are some things where we're thinking of here. And then the last thing that we'll need to think through and talk further with Carrie and you all on is how we, if we get donations from organizations, how we, you know, potentially recognize their support as well.
So we've been advising a lot on advertising and the fine lines between how we manage signage and things like that, so we know this committee's got to stay close to that. Maybe even on the naming of a piece on those large-scale ones has to come back here, so, but we didn't want to slow them down while we sort some of that out, so. They know to, especially on advertising, they know not to promise anything.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit the recognition plaques to just financial donors. I would include those kids, and then maybe the parent committee that's putting some time.
Good idea.
Kind of cool.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Right. Any questions?
How much are you looking to raise in total?
Well, we've had, we have the 200. The total cost of the project right now is estimated at $530,000, so the difference, the difference between, we're really fortunate that we have two expert, experts who work in that field, charitable giving, so they're excited and they, we think it's, it's realistic to raise that much.
That's great.
But of course, we'll have to adjust, given, you know, we can't actually start the project until the donations start rolling in, and we'll have to see where we're at. And things can be adjusted with the, with the project as we, as the donations exceed or don't.
And when are you going to start advertising that, the giving, and is there a link online where people can give, or is it check?
I can actually, if I can.
It is already up, all of it.
I can share one more.
I feel like people are more up to give if they don't have to write a check.
Yes.
The online giving, I think, is huge.
Yep.
And the 530K, does that include both phases of the project or just what we saw tonight?
Just what you saw tonight.
I think part of the hope with the second phase is because there's like a much larger project happening, is that the landscaping would not be isolated to playground landscaping, like larger project landscaping, it would be a landscaping project.
Right. Exactly.
But I know the committee feels very strongly about landscaping, so they want to have a say in how that.
Yep.
So you can go to thoreusbackyard.com, and there's some information here, you can actually see an aerial view of the school and where the project would, would take place. And then you can get updates, and very simple, you just click on donate, and then you can, can you, can you see my screen again?
Yeah.
And then you can, you have, you can donate online, 1,500, 250, et cetera, or a unique amount. And I believe some donations have already been coming in. Add an order comment, continue, very easy, or you could donate by completing the form and sending a check to Ben Klein's address.
Thank you.
That is it.
Any other, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Yeah.
Thank you, Justin, and we will be having you back, I'm sure, to talk about this, and then we'll be providing updates on fundraising and whatnot through the months as this moves on, so, thanks.
Sounds great. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
So the next agenda item is the CPS capital plan, and then I think for the guidelines letter response, we will just move that down into the regional conversation, and we'll just tackle both simultaneously. Okay, so Lori and Bob, do you want to take us through the capital plan?
Yeah, I think I'll let Bob pull up the overview he sent to you. So this is all coming out of the facility study, for the most part, that you've already seen. Bob and a number of us took the very detailed list of things that were provided to us and not only prioritized but categorized. The study had already done some prioritization, so it was a really great starting point for us this time to lay that out. Bob's done some summarizing here, because the details would overwhelm the document, but he can give you backup to anything you have questions on, for sure. Just to remind you, this is a starting point to a conversation. We're going to take this feedback, and then Bob and I are meeting with Town Manager Carrie LaFleur and CFO Anthony Insaldi to work towards a combined capital plan, so that's, that's the next step after this, all leading to a joint meeting that you have with Select Board and FinCom on the 18th of November. So this is the early phase of where we are with what we're suggesting should be prioritized and in what order, and we just wanted you to see what we were coming up with before we brought it to them to start to try to come up with a master plan.
And just as a reminder for anyone paying attention who are all aware of this, but this is a follow-up on the like massive overview of all of the CPS buildings, review of all of our facilities, and a 10-year view, if not more, of all of the needs that need to happen. And then thank you to you two and your teams for then going through all of that and prioritizing it into, you know, one year, two years, three, all the way up to 10 years. So that's a ton of work, so thank you.
And it was done by a third party.
So as you know, signage and recognition can be a powerful motivator for, you know, people considering large gifts. So having some sort of long-lasting visible acknowledgement of their generosity kind of enhances their sense of pride and connection to the project. So we're thinking about that as we talk through different ways to acknowledge them. So I just wanted to give you an overview, ultimately, we'll want your feedback on these things. So similar to the Carlisle project, we hope that we can do donor names on fence posts, if you've seen that project at all. This fence post would be sort of a barrier between the new expanded parking and where the playground is. And so their names would be on there and that would be for the $500 donation. And then for larger donations in the $5,000 to $50,000 range, giving the option of naming a particular element or bench or slide or piece of equipment. And then we're discussing the notion of a plaque that lists all of the donors for the project. So, those are some things we're thinking of here. And then the last thing that we'll need to think through and talk further with Carrie and you all on is how we, if we get donations from organizations, how we, you know, potentially recognize their support as well.
We've been advising a lot on advertising and the fine lines between how we manage signage and things like that, so we know this committee's gotta stay close to that. Maybe even on the naming of a piece, on those large-scale ones, has to come back here. So, but we didn't wanna slow them down while we sort some of that out. They know, especially on advertising, they know not to promise anything.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit the recognition plaques to just financial donors. I would include those kids and then maybe the parent committee that's putting some time.
Good idea.
Kinda cool.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Right, any questions?
How much are you looking to raise in total?
Well, we have the 200, the total cost of the project right now is estimated at $530. So the difference between, we're really fortunate that we have two expert, experts who work in that field, charitable giving, so. They're excited and they, we think it's realistic to raise that much.
That's great.
But of course, we'll have to adjust, given, you know, we can't actually start the project until the donations start rolling in and we'll have to see where we're at. And things can be adjusted with the project as we, as the donations exceed or don't.
And when are you gonna start advertising that, the giving, is there a link online where people can give? Or is it check?
I can actually, if I can.
It is already up, all of it.
I can share one more.
I feel like people are more up to give if they don't have to write a check.
Yes.
The online giving, I think is huge.
And the $530K, does that include both phases of the project or just what we saw tonight?
Just what you saw tonight.
I think part of the hope with the second phase is because there's like a much larger project happening, is that the landscaping would not be isolated to playground landscaping, like larger project landscaping, it would be a landscaping project.
Right, exactly.
But I know the committee feels very strongly about landscaping, so they want to have a say in how that.
So you can go to thoreau'sbackyard.com and there's some information here. You can actually see an aerial view of the school and where the project would take place. And then you can get updates and very simple, you just click on donate and then you can, can you see my screen again?
Yeah.
And then you can, you have, you can donate online, $1,500, $250, etc., or a unique amount. And I believe some donations have already been coming in. Add an order comment, continue, very easy. Or you could donate by completing the form and sending a check to Ben Klein's address.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you, Justin, and we will be having you back, I'm sure, to talk about this and then we'll be providing updates on fundraising and whatnot through the months as this moves on, so, thanks.
Sounds great, thanks for the time.
Thank you.
So the next agenda item is the CPS capital plan. And then I think for the guidelines letter response, we will just move that down into the regional conversation and we'll just tackle both simultaneously. Okay, so Lori and Bob, do you wanna take us through the capital plan?
Yeah, I think I'll let Bob pull up the overview he sent to you. So this is all coming out of the facility study, for the most part, that you've already seen. Bob and a number of us took the very detailed list of things that were provided to us and not only prioritized but categorized. The study had already done some prioritization, so it was a really great starting point for us this time to lay that out. Bob's done some summarizing here because the details would overwhelm the document, but he can give you backup to anything you have questions on, for sure. Just to remind you, this is a starting point to a conversation, we're going to take this feedback and then Bob and I are meeting with town manager Carrie LaFleur and CFO Anthony Insaldi to work towards a combined capital plan. So that's, that's the next step after this, all leading to a joint meeting that you have with select board and FinCom on the 18th of November. So this is the early phase of where we are with what we're suggesting should be prioritized and in what order. And we just wanted you to see what we were coming up with before we brought it to them to start to try to come up with a master plan.
And just as a reminder for anyone paying attention who are all aware of this, but this is a follow-up on the like massive overview of all of the CPS buildings, review of all of our facilities and a 10-year view, if not more, of all of the needs that need to happen. And then, thank you to you two and your teams for then going through all of that and prioritizing it into, you know, one year, two years, three, all the way up to 10 years. So that's a ton of work, so thank you.
And it was done by a third party, right?
Yes.
The third party was the starting point, so it was.
Study.
Gorman, yeah, Gorman Richardson Lewis Architects. And they did a study of four buildings, Alcott, Thoreau, Willard, and this building Ripley. There was no need to do sandborne pebbity. They came up with 100-plus-page reports for each building outlining things. They segmented it into sections, they looked at the architecture, the building envelope, electricity, fire protection, hazardous materials, HVAC, plumbing, and then site-related things. Site would include paving. And so, in each of those categories, they came up with different things, they had subcategories. I've tried to use some of their categories here to summarize this and on this report, you'll see that we've bucketed things into five years and for the year six through 10, we've put them all together. We're gonna need more time to categorize things in year six through 10 and some of those needs will emerge clearly as time passes too, like what we needed earlier than others. So we did not spend the time to prioritize what should be in, for example, year seven versus year eight. Another thing that we thought was important to do was to shade things, highlight things, so we've shaded them here in green for things that are energy-related. There's been discussion at the town for a performance management contract vendor and they have an arrangement we can procure with the vendor. This would be for school and town projects. It hasn't happened yet, but I'm just gonna make up an example where you come up with an energy savings initiative and you're gonna outlay a half a million dollars and you're gonna save, say, $100,000 a year for five years. The way these can be funded is to, is to basically pay the vendor a certain amount over the years that you're saving the money so that you don't need to fund the capital project and they guarantee savings. So the green projects, they're not necessarily 100% guaranteed to fit into that category, but they're the types of things that would fit into it. We still might need to outlay some capital for some of these, but we did wanna highlight that, you know, these are the types of things we'd hope to not have to pay for.
Great.
But they were also highlighted, you know, in our plans from the consultant. You know, we've stayed consistent with the consultant's recommendations. If they felt they were important and they thought they should occur in year one, we've left them here. So I have totals in here by building and by category. I do have detail and I will spend just some high-level information on what we have in here for FY '26. We have some ADA accessibility paneling that we should have at Alcott that we do not have, that we would wanna put in place to be compliant. It's paneling that's for vision impaired. There are throughout this some smaller things, I'm not just gonna comment on all the smaller ones, but there are building exterior needs that we have to facade where there's some damage that been highlighted by the consultants and they provided us with actual pictures of some of them so we know which spaces to look at. The heating control systems at Alcott are 20 years old. This is something that will have some benefit to us by having a more efficient system. You know, this is the type of thing, you know, if it can be funded through a performance management contract, we would like to do that. It might be something that we look to do at anyways. If it's not, the system is nearing its end of life. And a portion of this is for a split system in a computer classroom that we would need to replace to protect the equipment that's in that classroom. All of our lighting, we have fluorescent lighting throughout Alcott that's estimated to across approximately half a million dollars to replace. This is one that we feel we would want it to be funded by some type of project and not have to necessarily outlay that half a million dollars on our own. But that's what the cost would be. And we moved to energy-efficient lighting, we would save some money if we did that.
Can I ask a question, Bob? If you use the performance management contract route, which sounds spectacular, does that mean because you're not putting out a significant outlay into a single year, that then you would transfer those costs to our operating budget? Or would you put smaller chunks in a capital plan, like how does that work?
It would, it would be an operating budget expense.
We're shifting, so we would essentially shift potentially some of these expenses in the green out of the capital into an operating budget?
Conceptually, we still have to work out the details with the town. They still have to elect to go forward with it.
Who's the "they"? The company?
The town, we met with the town. We were invited to a meeting with all the town leaders, the professional leaders.
Cause I was gonna say, this would have to be factored.
To really talk about this, yeah.
Yeah, I would, like, this would have to be agreed on, to your point, agreed on by the macro community so that guideline recommendations, for example, wouldn't be adversely affected by.
Depending on the project, the savings might pay for itself.
Of course.
And the third party, the third party may just take the, you know, take the savings and then it pays for itself. So to your point, it's really just offsetting those savings, which is just a different way of budgeting.
And it's just, again, like, to use what Cynthia used earlier, it's just socializing it to the community that this is a different approach, so.
So we left that meeting really excited and to have a town-wide view of some of the sustainability efforts was really exciting, so.
Yeah, and we also thought it was important to highlight, like, these are things that are hard to fund if we don't have a different way to do it, so, anyway.
When you left that meeting, did you have a sense from the town on what their, like, ideal timeline is? Or, cause I mean, these are, these numbers that you have in here are FY '26.
I don't, I think they were initially asking what our feedback was and we thought it was a good idea.
A great idea, yeah.
They would need to procure, they'd have to do, I think, a request for qualifications, select a vendor.
Yep.
And then the funding part, I think you can make independent decisions on which projects you're gonna do. They could say, well, this project, it's not gonna really pay for itself, so they might say, we have to contribute capital, another one. Like, let's just say that $517,000 saved us $100,000 in electricity, then we're gonna reduce our electricity budget and we're gonna, I mean, I'm making up a simple example, but. So we, this is really early stages, I know some other districts who've done it.
I think it's a really good idea.
And it works with some projects, it might not work with others and I don't know right now which one of these projects will qualify, but I've highlighted things that might qualify.
Can I ask one other question on that, while we're on that topic? On the $517,000 for the lighting, for example, at Alcott, if this doesn't kind of come into fruition in this FY '26, is there an urgent need to do that? Or could we delay that to another year when, just if the town needs more time to get that up and running?
There's, we have things that are more pressing than that.
Okay.
But if there's a way to fund it without it.
Absolutely.
Impacting other things, sure.
Okay, thanks.
And then you're gonna see some small roofing things in here in year one. We do have some significant roofing needs that'll happen in future years and we're actually, when I get to Thoreau, I'll talk more about roofing, but we have some small roofing sections that we need to replace at Alcott. The next one we have for the middle school is irrigation for the new athletic fields. This was something that was not included or pulled out of.
Never included.
Never included in the building plan and we're gonna have athletic fields that will deteriorate if we don't have an irrigation system.
So the good news is there's already a well there, so we're really just building out the system itself, whereas some of the other, like Willard, we had to put the well in first and then put this irrigation system in, so that's a big help, that that number hopefully won't be too big, too much bigger than it is.
And we also thought it was important to put it in now, to synchronize it with the timing of when the fields are being developed.
Correct.
Otherwise, it'll be more expensive after they're built. The district level, we find ourselves without a way to fund copiers. So this is kind of a routine item where we'll have items cycling in for replacement. We have copiers throughout the elementary buildings and middle school and we need to be able to fund them. It's more efficient to buy them than to lease them, so their unit price cost is about $15,000. And then the.
So for each of these years, I thought the copier was just for the FY '26. Each of those line items is a copier?
We have, we've done an analysis of what we have and we have units that, we have five copiers that aren't supported by the vendor, they will.
We've gotten behind.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have three principals emailing me when we're gonna get copiers. So we would fund two in '26, two in '27, and then we would get to fund one a year and then we have one a year from.
We really need to build a solid replacement.
Yep, okay.
The Knox Trail has pneumatic lifts when they repair the buses and lift them. There's pneumatic lifts that basically hoist them up in the air for them to do the repairs. They're old and not in great condition. So we need to replace them for two reasons, one is safety-related, but the other is that we're just not gonna be able to maintain our buses if we can't lift them for the mechanics to do work. So they're at a point where we don't wanna take a risk and wait for it to fail because we won't be able to maintain our fleet. So this is something we felt kind of surfaced as a need, this was not something the consultants looked at. Vehicles weren't really part of their scope, we added this to the plan for next year.
Before you start at Ripley, if that's all right. You know, this building's just its own big-picture discussion. Study was very clear that almost all of it's at end of life. There's no other place to go for those of us who are here. None of us wanna put a ton of money into it. Carlisle needs to be at the table for certain portions of the discussion that are central office-connected, that has its own thing to it. So these are, in my opinion, placeholders to keep the discussion going. I don't think we're perfectly sure on how much and what timing, but there's a lot of needs here and if we just keep ignoring all of it, we're gonna spend more money down the road.
How many people do you have in this office, or in this building, notwithstanding students, your staff?
Oh, I mean, it's.
Forty-ish?
Forty-ish, probably, forty adults.
Not including the preschool.
And then case leases from us and then five preschool classrooms and lunch. So I just wanna preclude this, I don't want anyone to panic that this is, you know, that's a lot of money over the course of these years and there's a lot of discussion to be had over what we do in this site. We've already tried some different approaches and the infrastructure itself is so dated that it's just limiting and at what point is it good money after bad? And we just don't have answers to all of that, so it's just discussion to be had before we do a whole lot. So there's a placeholder, you know, a couple here to tackle a few things that seem really obvious. The facade is needing some urgent, fairly urgent repairs in certain places. So that seems like a starting point. And then if we could get the IT room HVAC appropriate so we aren't putting our high-grade systems of networking at risk, that would be another benefit. We've really struggled in there as of late with freezing systems and things. So, a lot more to talk about.
That was in our plan last year too, it ended up getting cut, so we just wanted to restore that.
Right.
And there's more, the consultants had other recommendations that we didn't include in the capital plan. We felt like they were nice, you know, additions that they proposed, but again, there's limits to what we have for capital funding and we really wanted to prioritize the elementary schools.
I think Cynthia.
Yeah, I hate to raise the prospect, but I think with Ripley, another study is in order to try to come up with creative solutions and either maybe a complete reconfiguration of the building, lopping off the pods, utilizing since basis is better and more efficiently. I just think it's so important before we pour millions of dollars into it to really, you know, $100,000 would be good money spent, I think, in trying to come up with some alternatives because I know the systems are partly here and partly there and it's very challenging to fix them and replace them in a sustainable, financially sustainable way. So what we have is a good inventory, but I think we need to come up with options in terms of addressing the issues here, because I think the other schools are pretty clear-cut. They are what they are, I don't think we're gonna completely reconfigure them or change them or. Willard, Alcott, and Thoreau, but I think Ripley is multi-use, various uses. You know, that space seems underutilized where, you know, those pods seem like, I don't think we should fix them and rebuilding them is gonna be very expensive. So I think it would be a really good idea for us to invest some money in a consultant coming in and just giving us three or four options, two options maybe, in addressing this over the next, you know, having something that is useful for another 20 years and not just fixing something for 20 years with, you know what I'm saying? So.
Yeah.
Definitely need a plan. We'll have to figure out, you're right.
And it's more than side job.
And so, yeah, to that point, I mean, our plan for this year was to just do things that we felt like we needed, we had to do and recognizing that the longer-term plan is hard, a little harder to get our arms around right now.
Thoreau?
Thoreau, so a couple of things on Thoreau. So most of the money there we allocated, well, actually, it looks like all of it this year, is for roofing. Those are sections of the roof that the consultants recommended and we repair. We are still digesting this, we had a deadline to get our plan issued today. We had a consultant here today that walked the roof with us and there's, we're really, there's shingled sections that are sloped roofs with shingles and then there's flat sections which have membrane. The shingled sections are in better condition than the flat sections with membrane. We've had leaks this past year that appear to be, some of them at least, related to the roof. The condition of the roof on, if you're facing the front of the building, the right side towards the 94 wing, that section seems to be in worse condition on the roof, the membrane. The section, if you're looking at the building a little bit more to the left on top, that membrane seems to be in a little bit better condition. So the consultant is going to, we have some prior-year capital funds, we're gonna do, have them provide us options on, and do some testing to determine what they think, whether they think we need to do a full replacement of those roof sections, whether we could replace in parts. And there's a different, a newer technology where they can apply a fluid over the membrane roofs that, they need to sometimes do some patching, but they apply a fluid over that coats over on top of it and prevents any leaks and you can get about 15 years out of that. The options that they present, they would do a thermal inspection first and based on their findings, they might opt towards one solution or another, but we're gonna get those solutions. And I don't, I know the $216,000 is not gonna be enough for, like, replacing a full section. It might enable us to do some patchwork. As we revise the plan, we may, we're still digesting that. We may wanna reconsider what we prioritize. But again, that roof, we had buckets catching, draining water at one point this year, so.
And just, it's worth noting that we're keeping an eye, MSBA offers a program on accelerated repairs and if any of these projects qualify, we would certainly consider applying and taking a chance to wait to see if we could get some subsidy from the state, yeah.
So the brown shaded ones could be eligible for that MSBA funding? I forgot to mention that the brown shaded ones could be eligible for other funding. And it would depend on the age of the part of the roof and or many other applicants there are. So that's the Thoreau priority for FY '26. We do have some vehicles that are very old. We have a pickup truck for the mechanic that goes out and does service calls when the buses have an issue on the road. That vehicle is over 15 years old, needs to be replaced, that's our priority for FY '26. For FY '27, it's a maintenance vehicle. Their oldest vehicle was 20, I believe we're replacing that one this year. This is the next oldest that's between 15 and 20 years old. And then an additional maintenance vehicle two years later. So these are for non-buses. Buses, we still have, we're keeping those with, consistent with what we had before to keep them in our operating budget. At some point, you know, we're gonna continue to have discussions with the town over whether those flip to capital or not, but that is not something that we can flip this year and, you know, we'll look at it for future years.
You'd just buy these straight out, these vehicles, you wouldn't lease them?
Yes, we'd buy them straight out, yeah. We do lease the buses because of their ticket price.
Pickup trucks are so expensive now, too.
Yeah. And then the, at Willard, there's some roofing sections in the building facade and masonry that needs to be repointed and the total for the building exterior is $34,650. In total, for FY '26, it's $1,535,14. If you deduct the energy. If you deduct the energy management-funded projects, we're at $908,000. We've had historical funding. It's changed the last two years of about $900,000. But it kind of gives us a sense of where we are. Some of those green items, we may want to pursue, whether we get a performance management contract or not, some of the smaller ones. But, you know, I thought it was important to show you the total and then show it deducting the green projects. And some of those green projects, we, again, might want to pursue. But, so the capital needs are, I would say, fairly contained in the next three years if you don't include the green energy projects. And then we really start to see a bump in FY '29 and FY '30 where the roof costs start to come in. And then, you know, different, it's a different challenge for funding those.
So again, this is early on and first pass. And we'll be bringing back to you updates prior, probably even at the next meeting before the joint meeting, as to how things are evolving.
So did you ask Mr. Sims about green community grants?
We have not at this point. We certainly will. Again, first pass was to get this in front of all of you before we shared with them. But he was at the table with the third-party discussion and certainly can be going forward.
That's about $250,000 for the town per year that's available to us.
We match, has been matched, yeah.
And the consultant, the performance management consultant, that when we talked with them, Eric was there, said that the consultant can work with the green energy grants as well.
And one other thing I know that they discussed at some point at the Climate Action Committee meeting is that for us to stay, to keep our status as a green community, we need to do an electrification study of all municipal buildings. So I'm not sure the timeline of that. So that's another good question for him. And I'm not sure how deep or what that means exactly, but.
Okay.
Well, thank you. I know a lot of work went into this, so thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
We'll continue the conversation. I guess the next joint meeting for this is November 15th with FinCom and the...
Eighteenth, eighteenth.
Yeah, okay.
We have another meeting this...
Six. Yeah, we're meeting the sixth.
Great. So I think that's it for Concord. We are going to, just like I said, move Item C into the regional discussion. So we'll do that together. So welcome, Carlisle.
Thank you. Get set up here. Not missing anything.
Thanks to those who are waiting to talk with us on other things. We flipped the agenda and that needed to have its due time, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate the patience.
All right, it's 6:53. I'm going to call to order the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District order. So without further ado, I think we move right into our student update from CCHS.
So the kids notified me this afternoon. They are overbooked tonight and are not attending.
Okay. Good for them.
Not our formal reps. We have other students here to talk with us, though, so that'll be good.
Partners in Rhyme?
Yeah. Okay, great. So we'll invite Partners in Rhyme to come up for your recognition. Patty Russo has been our lead on this for years. She comes to us outside of the schools, and this is her project with us. Shelley Hall is English teacher at the high school. And it's through her classes that we host this amazing dual experience and has, how many years now, Patty?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So it's a paired experience where Patty helps by bringing in poems and students and senior citizens read the poetry together. And they're here to give you some highlights of that work and tell you firsthand how amazing it is. We'll let you take it from there, make your introductions. I've got the slides. Patty, just cue me and I'll move slides along for you.
Perfect, thank you. I'm Patty Russo. Thank you so much for inviting us.
One of the mics.
Does this work?
Yep, perfect.
Okay. Thank you so much for inviting us to talk about Partners in Rhyme. We're really excited to share our experiences with you all. And so I'm Patty, this is...
I'm Shell Hall. I teach English at the high school.
I'm Elliot.
I'm Mark.
I'm Ann.
And you are going to hear from all of us, and we're going to try to keep it to 10 minutes. We've all been practicing, so. Get ready, and we'll start. Okay, can we advance, please? Great, okay. So what is Partners in Rhyme? It's an intergenerational poetry program where older adults join a ninth-grade English class to read, discuss, and write poetry together. And we work in small groups for six weeks. And we do this six-week series three times at CCHS. And this is my 14th year doing it and my 10th year with Shell Hall. She is my personal partner in rhyme. And we've been at this for, yeah, for 14 years. Next slide, please. Okay, so let me walk through a typical class with you. Each class has a theme. Themes include gratitude, mindfulness, personal refuges, the importance of community. We read two theme-related poems from both contemporary and classic poets, and we discuss them in small groups, like you see on the board. Okay? When we're discussing them, we focus on sharing our emotional response to the work. So what does this poem bring up for you? What do you notice in the poem? And that can lead to a personal connection with the poem. And in turn, that can help demystify poetry when you can relate to it in a personal way. We don't analyze the style or the message of the poem in this group so much. And then we end our time together by doing a reflective writing exercise and sharing that writing within the small group. And here you can see, this was last week, and today, when we met, several of the students got up and shared it in front of the whole class, which is super brave, and we applaud them for that. Okay, next slide, please. Some of the benefits. It enhances the way generations view each other, and we'll hear more firsthand on that from the rest of the group here. It improves students' perception of poetry. For both one and two bullet items, we have data to support that, which is on your handout. It lessens social isolation for all ages. You know, we're coming together, we're having fun, we're doing something different. Cultivates social-emotional learning and academic skills. Social-emotional learning for all of us, not just the students. We're always working on those soft skills. And finally, it allows older adults to experience CCHS in action live. And Ann will say more about that. Okay, on to Mixole.
So when we have students come into the classroom, they come, our older adults come in once a week for six weeks. So it's just a complete break from the typical, what we're doing in class. It's a novel experience. They're in small groups, so they're really sort of accountable and a really firsthand way to be present. And you know that's hard to do for teenagers, have so much distraction and so much on their mind. But students tend to just really rise to the occasion. They often are bringing their best selves and sometimes a different self to the group. For example, have, you know, self-described shy students participating actively, becoming leaders within the small groups, and even participating in reading in front of the small group and in sometimes the whole entire class. It's pretty remarkable to see those kinds of characteristics shine in this environment. So goes the next one. It provides a way to shine when, sorry, don't go to the next one. The next bullet point. I'm so sorry. Provides a way to shine when may otherwise be quiet. So some students who might feel like not so engaged or excited about academics, this is a way for them to sort of really connect socially. There's no grade attached to this assignment, this program. There's no homework related to it. Really truly is about the present moment and the present experience. Patty picks great poems. The older adults who come in are fantastic, so engaged and interested in meeting our teenagers at the high school. Students, like many of them, love the program. It's a break from the regular routine, as I said. They practice skills like eye contact. I mean, we don't, we don't teach this. We just know they're practicing because we've seen them do it, modulating their voices and speaking in front of groups. So modulating, some of our quiet students have to speak up, especially our older adults might need a little more volume in order to hear effectively, so they have to adjust. Friendships do develop, and maybe Patty, you can help me here. But we had one student who forged a connection, and that student's now writing for the Carlisle newspaper.
That's right.
So that those kinds of outside connections can happen and foster things that are happening beyond the classroom. That's not always the case, and we never force that, but it's sort of a wonderful outcome some of the time that you can't sort of anticipate. So I think we go to the next slide now, and we're going to Ann. Oh, I'm reading a poem. I'm going to read a poem. That's great. Can I take it up here? This is actually a poem from today. I personally love it, and it's good for all of us, I think, right now, not just our ninth graders. The poem is entitled "Yes," and it's by William Stafford. "It could happen anytime: tornado, earthquake, Armageddon. It could happen." Or sunshine, love, salvation. "It could, you know. That's why we wake and look out. No guarantees in this life, but some bonuses, like morning, like right now, like noon, like evening."
Oh, I'm glad you did that. We, in our group today, we hung on "right now." All the kids said, and we've got "right now." And this was amazing. This was just, just happened, and that's just great. I'm Ann Fortier, and I've been with the program for, I think, three or four years. And I look forward to it every, every week that we have it. I enjoy being the part, well, we all enjoy being a part of the throbbing life of CCHS, being in the hallway when classes change. It's amazing, all those faces just streaming by. We really like that a lot. I think some of us, some of us older people, really enjoy meeting with each other. Some of the elders are actual poets themselves. And everyone, like me, just loves being with students as they connect with something in the poetry. Poetry seems to be a bridge for some people. And a student came into my group this year. He, in his biography, said, "I don't like school and I don't like poetry." So he came in and looked away. And I thought, well, this is going to be interesting. And the poem that Patty chose for this, there were two poems about what we prefer. And Patty, and we read through them, as we do, this guy started leaning in. And he actually contributed something I didn't expect anything. I think sometimes when we give someone a new way of looking at things, it can kind of give them wings. And today, he wrote an ode to football that was something wonderful. He talked about soaring passes and brutal tackles. And he wouldn't stand in front of the class, but he was really terrific. So this changed some behavior immediately, which was very interesting. Another shy student did lead the class, which led the group, which was wonderful. And another found poetry in things that you don't usually find poetry. He wrote about mechanical things and the joy of solving a technical problem. Pretty neat. We seniors encourage the kids. We are, we sometimes give our reflections of what we think about a poem. And sometimes it's negative, too. The students, we find, are really, are deep and creative and thoughtful. The poetry, the brilliant poetry that we have, that just, it inspires them. And I think it shows us older people that there's a lot of hope for the world because of what we learned from the kids. So I thank you for this. It gives us older folks a good, a good, a good feeling.
Mark, you want to be first, or?
You want to go together? I'm Mark Johnson. I'm a 10th grader at CCHS.
I'm Elliot Goodman. I'm also a 10th grader. We both did Partners in Rhyme, like, last year with Mixole. And I don't know, I really liked it. I thought it was a cool way to, like, sort of, like, build on, I don't know, I feel like a lot of kids in my age group, they have, like, stereotypes about, like, older folks. And like, I feel like, like, a lot of it, like, isn't true. Or if it is true, it's, like, not always true. And I don't know. I feel like just getting to sit down and talk and find something in, like, in common, just to find a way to, like, start building conversation was a nice way to sort of change the stereotypes and, I don't know, like, engage in conversation, like, bond with people. And I thought that was just really cool.
I can share what I liked about it. I don't know. I didn't, I went into it not really caring much about poetry. I didn't, I wasn't excited when she announced the unit because I had, like, no idea. But when we started the first day, I met Ms. Fortier, who's my friend's grandmother, my best friend, yeah. And we were in the same group together, and we started sharing poems together. And I actually started to have a lot more fun. And I also, it's really hard for me, like, speak in groups, with groups of people, but I also shared poems, and I felt, like, comfortable in the room. It was like a very comfortable setting. But it was just really great, I don't know. I also did, I used to do professional acting before COVID. So I really, like, it was full circle, like, the art, just like the poetry. And like, it just brought me back to, like, theater and my love for art, so.
I think that pretty much sums up everything I had to say. I do want to thank Patty and Mixole and everyone here for letting us both come here. I think both me and Mark can say we really appreciate it, so.
It's awesome.
Thank you all.
Yeah, that was amazing.
Thank you.
What a wonderful program. Does anybody have any questions?
I think Patty has a slide or two more.
Oh. Oh, no, I don't. I just, I mean, I'm happy to share them, but that was just if all of a sudden we had extra time.
Just before we take questions, I just think we should shout out the grant funding we continually receive.
Yes.
I'll let you take it from there, Patty.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. A huge shout out to Concord-Carlisle Foundation for funding this program for 13, I think, of the 14 years, or maybe 12. The Parents Association did it one year, yeah.
So this is another program we're not putting into the budget. They cover a small stipend for Patty because she does a lot of behind-scenes work. And otherwise, she would just be a volunteer, and we need a little bit more help than that. And just to note that we're really grateful for that grant funding and that they continue to provide it.
Exactly.
And we think every student should have this.
I couldn't, I completely agree with you.
It takes a lot of courage to not just come here tonight and speak about this, but also to kind of open yourself up to different opportunities, like poetry and building relationships with people you might think aren't so cool. And so, well, well done. Thanks for coming. It's really nice.
I was going to say, I think, I know we do it in Carlisle. We spend a lot of time talking about multigenerational initiatives, and I think this is a wonderful one. And I think, you know, Elliot, I think you said it, there's stereotypes for every generation. And I think these are the kinds of programs that can take those stereotypes down. But I would say, just my personal opinion, that I think teenagers and the aging population probably get the, are probably the most misunderstood in the community, and I just love seeing the bridge between you two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks again for having us.
Yeah.
Okay. Bye.
It's great.
Can we ask one question? Because Mrs. Anderson has a question.
How do you get involved if you're a senior? Like...
Because some of us have parents in town that it would actually be really great for them to get involved.
Asking for Cynthia.
Well, we do a lot of outreach to, you know...
Like Council on Aging and...
Council on Aging.
Yeah, she has me push it out all the time through my newsletters and social media. We just recruit widely. Concord-Carlisle residents. Oh, I have missed that. Newbury Court, yeah.
And Shell, you're the only teacher that does this, correct?
Currently, yes.
Yes.
We need more older adults involved.
Okay.
And we would need more funding.
Oh, yeah.
But we could probably be doing more.
Yeah. That's a great PSA right here.
Yeah.
My email address is here if you want to contact me.
Okay, I might. Yeah.
Okay, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to Section 4 of our agenda. Like Carrie mentioned, during the CSC, we move things around so we can get folks like these, the kids here. like these, the kids here, home at a reasonable hour. So we're moving into discussion and action items. First one is our special education update from Angel Charles. Do we have her online?
Yeah, she is online.
Okay. You wanna tee her up?
There she is.
All right. Hi, Angel.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can. Thanks for coming.
Excellent. Thank you for having me and thank you for also allowing me to do this meeting remotely. I have to start by saying that was a really tough act to follow. That was such an impressive program. We, you know, we talk about inclusion, what's a better example? I mean, it was unbelievable. So I know that I had shared all of my slides with you ahead of time. Before I just, you know, engage you all in a conversation sort of about the State of the Union goals and sort of, you know, how my office is approaching the year, with regards to the data that I had shared, there are a couple pieces that I wanted to point out to you, which I think require a little bit more of an explanation or conversation. The first thing that I wanna know is that, the slides looking at the trends over time include students who are, who were being served within our districts, who were being served in out-of-district placements, and also who were being served in institutional settings. So you might see some difference between the numbers and that's because we wanted to look at the students who were serving in district, but also sort of the bigger picture because our out-of-district students and our students who are being served in institutional settings are just as important to my office and all of you.
Thank you.
Another piece, oh, yeah, great, that I wanted to point out and just sort of a curiosity that I have is that the disability categories, when you look at them by the numbers for both districts, it will be very interesting to see moving forward how DESI reports that information because as you know, this year we're adopting the new IEP form and one of the hallmarks of the new IEP form is that you no longer, we're no longer asking teams to have a primary area of disability. So if you have a student who is impacted by multiple disabilities, those will be listed in no sequential order. So it'll be very interesting as we move forward to the new IEP, how, how we're going to be search that data back to look at. It's just a point that I'm very curious about as we move forward.
So Angel, can I ask you a quick question to that end?
Oh, yes, of course.
So does that mean the teach of the numbers here represent individual students? There is no overlap? So someone with a development, so these are all individuals?
There is no overlap, that's correct.
Got it. Okay, just making sure.
Yep, so currently when we have IEP meetings, and this is sometimes, you know, I think when you have a student who has multiple disabilities, oftentimes, you know, a significant amount of time is spent in the team meetings or debating and going over like, which is the primary disability, you know, which is, is the most impactful. And the new IEP form allows us to move forward with the conversation, taking them all sort of at equal weight. So stay tuned for an update on that next year as we get our first year behind us with using the new IEP form. Okay. Another piece of note that was interesting to me, I have, again, a very unique vantage point, having this being my 10th year in the district. And I was really surprised because I remember back in 2015, we had, our number was in the hundreds of students who were being served in out-of-district placements. And the fact that we're here today and we are serving 49 students total in out-of-district settings just was something that I thought was noteworthy and, you know, something to reflect on. And, you know, we talk about later about, you know, things that we're proud of, that's gonna be something that I circle back to because I would say the decrease in that number of students over time is, is pretty dramatic and significant.
Yeah.
Another piece that I want to highlight is the slide that does an overview of our continuum of services. I wanna just also give a little shout out to the Cooperative Integrated Preschool because while you look at each school, you know, is serving various programmatic needs, everything starts at the preschool. That's where we first meet these learners. This is where, you know, we, they do everything and they do everything really well. And it really sets up our students for the rest of their time in the district, knowing that they're coming out of that high-quality program. So we're really proud of the work that they do at the preschool in teeing us up to take it from there when we get to the elementary schools, middle, high school, and then beyond. Another piece of information that I wanted to point out, which is not always necessarily self-evident, when we talk about the related service providers that we are accessing and using to support our students in the district, occasionally we will have students with needs that don't necessarily justify a 1.0 with regards to service providers. Particularly of note, one area I wanted to highlight is that over the past three years, we've seen an increase in students with need for vision services, specifically orientation and mobility specialists and teachers of the visually impaired. And at the moment, we're contracting to meet those needs. But that's just something that is, has been on my radar and those services are not always easy to find. I feel like oftentimes, you know, our districts are vying for a small number of service providers in that area. So I was very fortunate that my predecessor had set up really nice longstanding relationships with providers. So we have not found ourselves this year in a situation where many of our neighboring districts have found a, a really desperately trying to find folks to fill that role. So that was just one piece that I, I wanted to highlight because it's not, you don't see those folks reflected on our FTEs anywhere, but they are critically important for us to meet those unique student needs. Questions about any of that with regards to the programs before I engage you in more of a conversation?
Just one thing, Angel, for CCHS, you know, you have the continuum of services. I mean, they're much like the preschool where we have all of our programs at CCHS. So, so on both ends, we kind of bookend that with those two programs having everything there, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
The one difference, you know, at CCHS, they're not all in the same room together. That's the only difference.
Yes, exactly. I mean, the preschool is just such a wonderful place and if you don't know about it, definitely check it out.
Correct, it's all under one roof, both at CMS and CC, well, almost at CMS in February and then at CCHS, yeah.
Actually bringing me to a perfect transition, we're thinking about goals for this year.
Great.
You know, as I started my, my second year, I was really at, at no shortage of things to choose to prioritize this year. It's, I feel like in my office, you know, things can change on a dime pretty quickly. But a couple of areas that I've chosen and my team has chosen to focus on this year, obviously, number one is rolling out the new IEP form. We started the process last year by having all of our coordinators and administrators at each level who really take the lead, especially around initial and three-year reevaluations of making sure that they had the training and support that they needed to lead this work. And we were fortunate to be able to take advantage of a grant that DESI had put out to support the rollout of the implementation of the new IEP form. We have used those grant funds to partner with three different organizations to help support us in rolling this out to our, our large amount of faculty who are gonna need the training. Tomorrow is actually the first of three dates where we are offering the district-wide professional development in-person training with a wonderful facilitator from a collaborative in Western Mass named Laurel Pelletier, who's going to be doing three onsite two-hour trainings of all special, for all special educators across both districts. So that happens tomorrow afternoon is our first session. In concert with that, Case Collaborative has started consultation services and professional development services and we're partnering with them to provide two parent trainings in addition to the high-level overview that I was able to provide last year to parents. There'll be two options. The first one's on November 13th, which is a virtual online training for parents on the new IEP. And the following is a week later, which is the in-person opportunity. So there's two opportunities for parents to receive additional training on the new IEP form. And the third, which I'm really excited about, is if you may recall, if you've been here for a while, a few years ago, we had Alan Bloom come out to give us a training on just quality IEP writing 101. And he has developed something called the Bloom Method App, which is a fantastic tool that we can use to, it, it does three things. First, it provides asynchronous training opportunities for, for educators, both the new IEP itself, but also, you know, for any folks who were able to take advantage of the in-person training that Alan did on, you know, writing a really strong IEP. All of those videos are also available and they partnered with DESI so that teachers can receive PVPs for completing the modules. It also serves as a data collection tool, which teachers can use because, you know, as, as you may know, the new IEP form is far more data-driven than we've used in the past. So it's a tool that teachers can use on their, on their tablets, on their phones, on their desktops to collect data and to develop strong goals. And it also has various templates for supporting folks in writing the new IEP. So we're really excited. That's a huge goal that my office has for this year. The second goal that I have is, and it's also something I'm, I'm very excited about. As you know, with the current status of the Concord Middle School, we have, we're trying to replicate programs across two buildings, which can sometimes be a challenge. So another goal that I have is to really work closely and partner with the team at Concord Middle School to make sure that they feel supported and prepared to merge students who have been in the same program but in two different buildings and to really make sure that the students, when they come together, feel a strong sense of cohort which with their, so if I'm a sixth grader and I happen to be in the Connections Program, having the seventh and eighth graders come together as a full cohort is going to be amazing, especially for some of those students, you know, who are coming up from programs, for example, coming up from Thoreau, it's gonna be like, you know, a reunion of sorts, having the students all come together. So very excited about that work and supporting that team as they really, I'm so excited for the students. It's going to be such a relief to have that transition over and to have those cohorts fully flushed out. The third goal that I have for this year and my team has for this year, and I have to thank you deeply for supporting us with our expansion of launch. It has been a dream come true that we are going to be able to provide a community-based, highly visible, authentic opportunity for students to be in our community and, you know, be, be working in our community and have a space where we can welcome members of the community in to purchase goods from our students. They're very excited and I just am deeply grateful. It's, I never thought it, it would happen, honestly, in my, my time. So thank you and it's, it's a huge goal. Questions about my goals, our goals?
Just really super helpful to, to hear them and we're excited about the goal number three as well. Obviously, that's fresh in our minds.
Fine.
I think I'm pretty, pretty clear and I thought the presentation you sent was, was wonderful. Is there anything that you need our support on that we can help you with? Obviously, we've spent a good amount of time on special education. We will continue to do so. Is there anything else that you need that we can help you with?
You've already been above and beyond. As far as support it goes, again, like I said, just this, the fact that we're launching a launch retail space is, is huge. You know, and I think about other areas to support, you know, I've said this before, but I would love to give the members a tour of some of our programs in the district. I think it's, it's one thing to, you know, look at the populations of students on paper that we're serving, but to see it in action is, there's nothing that can compare to it. Which also sort of goes to, you know, something I'm proud about, but something, you know, that we're gonna continue to need your support with. You know, we develop these programs, but that's not it. You don't just develop the programs and you don't just have students come together and call it a program. They need constant tending to nurturing. And one thing that I'm, I'm proud about is I think that, you know, my team and all of the educators across both districts are so committed to expanding, refining, getting better and just making those tweaks on a, I mean, we have a constant conversation about, you know, what does this program need? What does, what do we need at this level? So that work is something that's not going to go away. But, you know, when I talk to my colleagues in, in other districts, given the district of, that's our size, if district's our size, it's very impressive and we're so fortunate to be able to offer such a wide range of, of programs and really have that full continuum for preschool all the way up. It's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not lost at all on me when another district reaches out and says, you know, "I have a student with a complicated profile. I heard you have this program. You know, would you consider reviewing the student's profile to see if they might be a good match because we're struggling to find a fit?" And when we are able to provide that fit and welcome students from other districts into our schools, that's incredible. So again, I would say your, your continued support as we continue to refine, tweak and tend to those programs and keep them healthy and strong. I would also say, you know, something else that I'm very proud of and fortunate, again, it's not like this in other places, we have such a collaborative, positive and just healthy relationship with faculty, with staff, with our CPAC, with our administrative team. It, it really makes the hard work that we do so much more rewarding and it really does greatly benefit the students when we're all working together to, to give students what they need. And so, I'm very proud of that because it's not been the case in other places that I've worked. And I'm also fortunate to have a really strong team. It's only been a year that we've all been together, but I, I feel fortunate and proud of the team that we've assembled and feel like we have the right people in the right places. And, you know, I think when I'm out and visiting the programs, it's, you can feel it.
That's great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other que, oh.
Just as comment to that because this group would be interested. We met yesterday with the CTA Committee that was formed following the bargaining sessions we had last year. One of the agreements we made was that there'd be follow-up conversation. We didn't really bargain anything about special education per se. It was more of an ask that we get a structure in place for input, feedback, questions, concerns. And we had the first meeting in May. We kicked off the year yesterday, Angela and I and actually Mr. Sparks. And there were about 10 educators here. They've, they've recruited as many as 15 to 17, so they all come when they can. And we're meeting monthly and it's just gonna be a think tank of what's working, what's hard, what do we need, all of that, so that there's a really direct loop, not just with the building levels, but with the central office as well. So it was a really great start to the point of like, we're all in it together and what a difference that makes.
Yeah, awesome.
So.
That's great.
Angel, I'm definitely gonna take you up on your offer to visit.
Yeah, we'll get that organized and invite, let me get organized and invite you all so we're not one-offing on each of you, but we'd love to have you.
Just a real credit to, you know, the staff. I mean, just one small example, if people haven't been to Unified Basketball, I highly recommend it. Last week, there was a game. It's just like such a model of inclusion with the students, with the faculty. You had both principals there, you had your department chair there in special education. Like it was just, there were probably 10 teachers there. They didn't have to be there. Everybody wanted to be there, the athletic directors, the ref, like you really don't have a better example of inclusion than that.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to see it coming to the middle school, Unified Basketball will start then, and then track in the spring. So just what great programming we have to offer. And a lot of this has happened under your leadership, so just thank you so much for your time and we're really looking forward to the launch space.
Yeah, and thank you to The Bridge. They ran a great article last week about Unified Basketball. And the last home game is the 29th.
Yes.
So don't miss it, four o'clock.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, I have two questions. First one is, I'm just looking, so this is, you know, COVID, we have somewhat of declining enrollment and our special education is, you know, pretty constant, which means percentage of students is kind of gradually increasing, receiving special services. And I guess my questions are, is this common across our other schools? And is this a trend we think will continue? Just from, I know you can't predict the future, but I'm just curious. And if there's any, you know, differences in how you're diagnosing some of the students too since coming out of COVID. So I guess really three questions and sorry. Throw them all out.
No, don't be sorry. Don't be sorry. So the first question is sort of, you know, I, I think that, you know, the special education needs are, you know, regardless of enrollment changing, they are sort of, they're a constant. I think that.
I think that efforts that were started pre-pandemic and were revved up and continued post-pandemic around more earlier and more robust screening of students were able to help us identify students faster, maybe than we had before 2020. So I would say that is definitely a factor, our screening and the MTSS system and, you know, just the type of screeners that we were using were able to allow us to identify students earlier who, you know, may have slipped or just not necessarily, especially it's so hard when we had so many kids who were home and remote learning. I would also say that, you know, and I felt this tremendously when I was at Thoreau. Now that we have these programs established, they're known farther and wider than I had anticipated. It's not, it has not been uncommon for families out of state to reach out and say, we've heard about this program. We're considering to moving to Concord so that we can, you know, have our student in this program. That was a phenomenon that I had not seen prior to 2019 and I have been seeing quite a bit of it. So I would say that's something that's interesting. And what was the third question?
If you see this trend continuing into the future?
I don't see it slowing down, to be honest.
Yeah.
I don't. And, you know, it's something that we talk a lot about at the admin level when we, you know, it's really hard and, you know, actually, Dr. Hunter and I just had this conversation because, you know, we've got these programs and some of them are very, very popular. So we're going to need to just keep that in mind as we, you know, go through the years and we have, you know, more and more students who are either A, specifically moving to Concord for our programs, or just, you know, taking advantage of it because we have them or kids deciding, you know, it might be, we'd like to discuss our child's candidacy for potentially returning from out of district. So all of those things, I don't see slowing the numbers down.
The only thing I'd add to that, the other work we're doing, which Shelley's going to talk more about in the coming month, we're doing a lot of tier-one aggregate work at the, especially at the elementary schools. And I think as we firm that up, in literacy especially, as regular ed gets stronger and stronger, both tier-one aggregate and the interventions, that's where I'm hoping to see some offsets where we're going to be able to service kids under the regular ed umbrella and they potentially won't need special education because we'll catch things early and close gaps that way. That's part of the work we're doing. You've heard, some of you that have been here know, we've built the structures and the systems. Now we're really working on the content of all of that. So I think that's the regular ed side that might have some impact over time, but it's hard to say how it'll all play out exactly.
Yeah.
Can I mention one other, sorry, can I mention one other thing? You just reminded me, Dr. Hunter. So in the upcoming, in November, in upcoming faculty meeting, I'm so excited to be co-presenting with Shelley a rollout of our new student support team process and our district accommodation plan. I think that for she and I to get up there and present side by side and offer professional development is going to be very powerful and I think it's also going to send a really strong and clear message that special education and general education folks are coming together. And we're presenting as a united front and I'm very excited for that opportunity. So thanks, Shelley. Be there.
She's here.
Thanks, Angel.
Go, Brian.
Yeah, Angel, just a question, as Carlisle students are rising from eighth grade up to CCHS, what's the collaboration like with Lori Bruce and her team and, you know, supporting those students as they're transitioning to a new school?
So we are, so we follow similar transition processes we use from coming up from the middle school. But I would have to say that, you know, it's critically important earlier than later that we have students from Carlisle on our radar. And Lori has been wonderful in, you know, sort of keeping me close and keeping my office close with regards to students who are coming up. I think it's something that, you know, in my short tenure here, I have significantly prioritized and I see that as something that's going to get stronger and stronger because I've made it a really intentional priority.
Excellent. Good to hear. Thanks.
All right, there's no more questions? We can move on or do you have a question? Go ahead.
Just more of a comment that something that stood out to me was this, your mentioning of the fact that there are only 49 out-of-district placements compared to over 100 when you were here. I just, like, that just, I knew that conceptually, but I feel like hearing those numbers really is remarkable on so many levels, from like, students who are back in their community schools to also the programs that we have in place to support those students. And then also, like, we are responsible for the budget. That has huge budget implications. So I just feel like on so many levels, that's worth calling out, that that's pretty incredible.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It is. And I think you've all named, it's not just even about the special ed students and what they're benefiting from by staying, but it's benefiting the entire student population and the schools at large and being inclusionary. And you can watch the shift that's happened in the last seven, eight years. It's been really great.
That's huge.
And it can be challenging. We aren't going to pretend it's perfect.
And I think as a Thoreau family who was, had kids under Angel's when she was the principal of Thoreau, you know, you built out so many programs at that school and that really launched such an opportunity for the district. So it really is very, it's really nice to just hear that data point.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Angel. Hoping.
Thank you so much.
Good rest of the night. Thank you.
Thanks, Angel.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to move to the next one. I know the guidelines letter for CPS, we're going to cover that with CCRSD as an aggregate. So Bob, do you want to take us through that from Dr. Hunter?
I'll just sort of preface, you know, we gave you a lot of information that the finance committee is, committees are receiving for their first discussion on Thursday night with us. The intention of this discussion is, one, it shouldn't have had too many surprises. Most of it was information you had seen, but we're happy to talk on any of the details. But it's also about the meeting we're going to have Thursday with the finance committee. Our practice has always been to talk with the school committee before we meet with the finance committee and often it's two-day cadence that we have this week so that you all feel like you had a chance to really talk with us on things we're going to be talking on with them. So Bob obviously did an enormous amount of work to compile the response, the precipitous to the documentation you received as the memo we receive from the Concord Finance Committee annually. Typically, it's similar. I don't think there were a lot of changes this year. Bob did a good job of trying to use resources that had already been compiled, so we weren't recreating wheels, but then to consolidate into a place that is easier to digest and manage. The biggest thing that's different tonight that you haven't seen, and he'll get to that in a minute, is the five-year projections, which is a unique finance committee ask. It's very atypical in the educational world to be asked for that. And I guess this is where I just name annually the struggle that it is for us to put those numbers together. When we did the five-year projections a year ago, if we had done, if we'd had a crystal ball, we would have put another $500,000 into FY25, which is the current delta at the high school for out-of-district. So they're as good as the moment of time you make them and not really a lot beyond that. And I just want to keep saying that everywhere. I think sometimes they've been weighed pretty heavily in the budgeting discussions that go on between town and schools and we're not a business that can sit here and predict that quite the way we might wish we could. So they're our best estimate. And of course, with three-year contracts, by the time you get to years four and five, they're really bigger and bigger questions. So, and I guess my final comment, we're giving you those before we've built the budget. So even FY26 is Bob, you know, doing some really high-level analysis at assumptions. So that's my preamble to, those five-year projections worry me every year. So, I'll let you take it from there.
So I'm just going to scroll through parts of it just so that you, until I get to this section, but the beginning of the memo is really just highlighting things that we've already presented to the school committee, so I'm going to just jump through those.
I'm not laughing at you, Bob. I'm just staring through Alexa. That's great. I'm going to look over here.
I will just highlight that we did include, and people can reach out to me separately if they have questions. I know that we presented this to the school committee before, a circuit breaker example of how it's calculated. We used a model student, Jane Doe here. But the finance committee was interested in this as well, so I just included it in the packet. It's not something we provided before, but it always raises questions and how do they calculate that? I do want to just point out though, that, you know, $134,000 combined transportation and tuition are, we reimburse, we absorb more than half of that, $78,000. So circuit breaker's not a panacea. It's helpful, but we still have to absorb a substantial amount ourselves. Another thing I wanted to highlight related to circuit breaker, so the state publishes circuit breaker reimbursement rates. These are at the macro level. And so in FY, they started reimbursing for transportation in FY21. This is part of the Student Opportunity Act and they were phasing it in and then by, the goal was that by FY23, they would fully fund transportation. In FY23, they funded 57% of eligible transportation costs. And when I say fully fund, 75% is the most that they'll reimburse for circuit breaker. This year's reimbursement rate is 44%. We were hopeful and were expecting, not expecting, but we were hopeful for 75%. To give you a sense of magnitude, we have about half a million dollars in each district, a little bit more than that in transportation costs. If that 44% was 75%, we'd have $150,000 to $200,000 more in circuit breaker relief that we would be able to apply and help offset some of these tuition costs that we didn't budget. So we don't have that. We still have, I would say, healthy circuit breaker, you know, funding, but not as healthy as it could be if it was fully funded by the state.
And Bob, just to.
They're just not fully funding the Student Opportunities Act as long as.
What they do is they do a budget line item for circuit breaker. It's a certain amount. And then when all the districts apply, they see, oh, we have more claims than, you know, they have a certain dollar amount and they apply these percentages and they back into the transportation percentage because there were more claims than anticipated.
Got it.
Yeah, I think it's good to note that we're going to work to share something, Bob's done a great job of obviously explaining this, especially looking at the percentages. We're looking at state trends and we're going to come up with a one pager, so to speak, for this committee to see with really headwinds and tailwinds. As you can imagine, from just listening to Bob for about two minutes, there's more headwinds than tailwinds. But having a view on that and I think understanding the state trends and also some of the policy that's driving that, like, like the Student Opportunity Act, these are huge implications to the budget. And you can see from the chart here, I mean, it changes year over year, if I'm reading that correct.
And can I just ask a question on that chart? In FY24 and FY25, where it's 57% and 44%, is that of 100% of eligible cost or 75% or?
It's of 100% of, the eligible costs are only after you've gone four times higher than, above four times the typical amount of funding per student. So it's like above $52,000. They'll reimburse 75% above that.
Above that, okay.
Tuition and 44% of transportation. The detailed example walks it through pretty well. It's un simplified.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So get the transportation, sorry. What, you had circled on the transportation cost?
Yeah, they are funding 75% of the tuition.
Of tuition, but on the transportation, it's 57%.
44% this year, 57% last year, correct.
Okay.
For the year-end reports, I provided those to the school committee last meeting. I attached those to, they have information on that, the grant reports, our year-end general fund reports for both districts. So I'm not going to go through that now. I talked about OPEB last time. We are kind of proud of the competitive grant funding that we were able to get and so we did highlight that and shared that with the finance committee.
I mean, I guess just to follow up on that note, just as you listened tonight, the Thoreau Playground we're privately fundraising for, Partners in Rhyme is a grant fund. Angel got grant funding for the IEP training and she's bringing in tuitions from other districts. So I just want to keep, I don't know if we're doing a good enough job of communicating all the work we're doing to not ask for money, but it's there. So maybe that can be part of our discussion Thursday night, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, fully agree.
Yeah.
Do we have a breakdown and not, not for right this second, but maybe just for Thursday of like, you know, percentage of money that comes from the state, percent that comes from the town, from grants or other? It might be.
Some of that's in here, but there's, I mean, if there's specific data points that we want to provide, we can.
Like Partners in Rhyme doesn't show up on your grants.
Yeah.
On like the stuff you prepare for us from a budget.
I think it's something we need to keep thinking about as we get into this budget discussion.
That would be a really interesting, not, again, not for immediately, but that might be an interesting just pie chart.
We've had a lot of asks for go find alternate funding and I think we're being fairly successful. So I just want to be sure we're sharing it.
And I think it's knowing like the Concord Ed Fund grants that come in, the foundation grants that come in. I mean, it is important to just keep saying that, that there are, there is grant money coming in here.
Well, and besides grants, are there things that we're asking the parents, excuse me, to pay for as well? I mean, more phenomenal with those fees on the Carlisle side, like, old age kindergarten, but those, that's another piece of the story. What else has been offset by?
Yeah, because you've got athletic fees and parking fees at CCHS specifically, so.
Correct.
And then there's more money in addition to the fees that parents are actually paying.
Right. Yeah, it's, yeah, then you're buying your uniform and you're this and you're that. Yeah.
That's a good point.
So the presentation we have for FinCom here, the first slides are things that the school committee's seen before, but there might be new FinCom members there. We basically included the key strategic plan initiatives from our five-year strategic plan and I'll jump over those, but they're there just for folks who might not be familiar with them. So our five-year plan, again, this is not our budget for anybody who's listening. This is our projections as of today. And what we're projecting is, at a high level, just if this slide is new to anybody, all funds at the top includes general fund, grants revolving, circuit breaker. Then identify funding sources. This was something that the FinCom had requested, so we get funding from grants revolving, circuit breaker are really the key things. And the remainder is the general fund impact. So we're anticipating that our total expenditures will go up about 2.7%. And then in FY26, and we'll talk more about why that is in a second, and then 3.4, 3.3, 3.2, 3.2. Our COLA for teachers is 3%. A lot of our other bargaining units have landed there. And just for the sake of planning purposes, we've assumed that out going forward for five years. We did have some, well, I'll talk more about some of the key drivers on the next slide. Big picture, what's in the grants for CPS is food service, the homeless grant provides us pretty robust funding. We could get up to $800,000 this year. And then the MECCO grant. So those are the three big grants. We get some smaller grants as well. The revolving funds is primarily school lunch and preschool for CPS. And circuit breaker, you know what circuit breaker is.
So those grants are not the competitive grants we were referencing a minute ago. They're the more entitlement grants that come with certain enrollments or legislation, either way.
So we're forecasting some consistency in those three categories, but not a lot of growth. And we showed the general fund increase is actually slightly higher because the expenditure growth overall is slightly exceeding the revenue growth, but it's not off by much in this district.
Can we talk about CMS for a minute, Bob?
Sure. And that's highlighted a little bit on the next slide.
Okay, go to the next slide then. I'm anxious to talk.
Yeah. So if you want to, Lori's going to talk a little bit about.
Yeah, my name is on this. So five years ago, we made a commitment that we would consolidate, have opportunities for consolidation and reduce costs at the middle school since we were in one building because of the redundancies that we have had to carry for a long time. So we're going to fulfill that commitment. It's a half a million dollar commitment. We've started to identify where that will come from already with Mr. Cameron and make some of those lists. I'm going to say out loud, you know, and I need to talk with the CTA, that probably will be some reduction in force unless attrition naturally takes care of it. So we're going to have to navigate all of that. So that we feel good about, the commitment we made to the community is going to happen. It's a one-time lower number, so that's half a percent-ish?
No, it's a percent.
It's a full percent of increase on the, you know, decrease on the operating budget that you would have otherwise had to have. So for us to project today that at CPS, we can come in under three is only because of the $500,000 commitment at the middle school.
And then it goes back up to that 3.4, 3.2.
Yeah. Yeah, and it will reset the base, so that's worth noting. And I think that was some of the discussions that happened five years ago in the middle school, was being financed. And that does have an impact, but it's not really indicative of our annual growth. It's a one-time adjustment.
Sure.
And can I just ask a utilities question? In terms of, you know, the school is obviously an enormous school, fully electrified, so we expect our electrical costs are going to go up. So is it really going to be a $500,000 cost savings, do you think?
We're not going to pay for gas, so we will pay for more electricity. I feel like we did get an estimate from the consultant that it was going to be relatively, you know, we'll decarbonize, but it'll be relatively cost neutral. I projected 3% increases for rate increases, even if our usage doesn't go up. Until we see it, I'll be more confident after a year, after some time in the building, or after a full year in the building. So, you know, while we're building the 27 budget, we'll still only have been in the building for a short period of time. But it's supposed to be an energy-efficient building, and the projection that they shared with me, we did factor into our 25 budget for the last three and a half months of the year.
That's going to be more of a risk as we go into FY '26 because we aren't going to be sure. We're going to budget based on the best that we know. We're going to show the $500,000 reduction, and we're going to have to wait and see how that all plays out. So, yeah.
And I have the same question. As we get deeper into the real budget, I'd like to see the projections, and will there be additional costs for the new sanitation plant versus the sewage that we currently have?
Yeah, we've started to, that we actually started to build in this year, knowing we would be in the building February through June. So yes, there'll be some need to adjust for that as well.
Yeah, that's built in for an appropriated basis for 25.
Okay. So we get to see the whole picture of, I don't need to see what is happening now, but the costs, and we know what the costs are, so that.
Yeah, the tricky part is we're going to build 26 without actually living it yet, so we'll still be working off the projections.
Yeah, but we can say what we did to budget.
I mean, at Willard, when they turned it on, the lights were on 24/7, and everybody started, you know, I drove by at 2:00 AM, and it was just like a Christmas, huge Christmas tree. So they finally got that under control. It was just things like.
There'll be some bumps, for sure.
Is it a school district on the North Shore that had a lot longer problem on that, too? So just to, for presentation purposes, we didn't feel it was appropriate. The yellow shaded areas up here are where we projected the $500,000 in savings, or where we've shown them. That's not necessarily where they're going to come from.
Right.
And we did not want to get into specifying specifically where they're coming from now. We felt like that would be more appropriate to do with the budget, more appropriate if we were making decisions to talk to any impacted areas.
Again, we're going to hope to do most of this through attrition, but we don't know if that's going to be possible yet or not.
So the CTA, we forecast a little bit higher this year, so it's a 3% COLA. We've had a decent number of retirements, so they're really, the key driver on the teachers is, you know, you have a balance between the 3% COLA, then you have steps and lanes. You could have teachers with 7%, 8% increases, depending on whether they advanced a degree or got some additional combination of a step and a degree, offset by, we've had $60,000 savings on a teacher retiring who was very experienced and educated versus a new hire. So that swings the salary numbers, and we get a better picture of that as we move forward. We do get some notifications. We did put a small incentive in the contracts for both districts.
They did, and I think it's mattered. We've had more information in the month of October than we've had in years.
That's great.
Thank you.
And then the cost projections for future years are based on, you know, the escalations in inflation rates, mostly based on what we're experiencing. We do project some moderation in the inflation for contract services and supplies as time moves forward, but we've seen vendors, we've had to fight hard to try to keep them, keep their increases at moderate levels. The tuitions reflects that the state will approve an inflationary increase for private schools. It also reflects one to two students additional out of district. Right now, we have three above what we budgeted. Three students will age up to the high school, but we feel like based on.
Those are really early discussions that were still.
So we're forecasting 10%, which would equate to about one, one and a half additional students. So when we come to the budget, we have to make, you know, our philosophy has been zero-based. We don't typically put these placeholders in. We'll have to have that discussion during the budget process, and we'll be transparent about what we have.
I feel like we're all over that right now, so, yeah. That's a good place to feel.
And then the sickly retirement benefits, those are small amounts, those are waning out. And so that's it on CPS. Move on to the region, unless there's any questions.
No, I think just in the interest of time, just maybe call out some of the key parts. I don't want to rush you, but at the same time, I want to be mindful of everyone's time.
Great. So the region, same follows a similar format. The only, you know, difference I'd say here in revolving, we have some significant revenues for adult ed and athletics here that we don't have in CPS that contribute to the revolving What we're projecting is 3.4% general fund increase this year, 2.9% next year, and then 3.1, 2.2, and 2.9. The reason for the 2.2 is the pension system at Concord Retirement has catch-up contributions to get them funded, fully funded. Those should stop in FY '29, and that's a significant savings, a couple hundred thousand at least.
Can you talk about the debt impact?
Yeah, the same, this is the same slide again, but showing if we don't factor in debt, what those increases are. I will say that Concord's FinCom typically sets their guideline exclusive of debt. So FY '26 will be a challenging year for us. We're projecting right now, we would be at about 4.2%. We'd have to think of ways to strategize and, you know, what we could do to address that or mitigate that. Maybe we leverage some Circuit Breaker, but just keeping all things equal and projecting what our costs are and what our revenue sources are, and not getting into borrowing reserves, this is what we would project our numbers to be. So again, you can see the general fund increase, which is what would get assessed to the towns is, I'm sorry, the, you can see the difference is about 0.8%. So in the guideline-setting process, that's something.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind ourselves that the guideline in, for the town of Concord doesn't include insurance benefits, workers' comp, some things that we do have included in the guideline. So those numbers are higher, but that's partly because we're absorbing some of the non, you know, almost fixed costs, you know, whatever health insurance goes up is going to be in this, workers' comp, we're having some ongoing increases there. It is offset by some of the decline in OPEB, or you're going to have, as a committee, to talk about whether you're going to leave that stable or not, but that's in this operating budget, unlike CPS where the town carries all the OPEB costs. The debt itself, you're on the decline for the high school projects, so that's why it's beneficial when it's included, to make the number feel smaller. But we understand the guideline process, at least in Concord, usually does not include that because they're focused on operational costs. So all these moving factors, and then the assessment on top of it all, which we have good news, I think, to share, that the October 1 numbers are essentially static, so there's no swing to either community, really, very minor to Concord, but very minor. The numbers have essentially not changed. So that's always a relief to not have that additional variable going into the budget process because it adds a layer of challenge and confusion, both sometimes. Any other things you want to highlight?
Just on the cost driver slide, I will just highlight the OPEB here. So you can see the retirement in FY '29 goes down from a million to 757,000. That's something I'm going to keep our eye on. I'm actually not sure why it doesn't go to zero at some point, if that's supposed to be funded by employer contributions. So that's something we need to do a little bit more research on with the Concord Retirement Board. OPEB, you can see we're contributing 425,000. That's an item for discussion we'll bring up during the budget process. We have over $10 million in our OPEB trust. That's a lot, could be viewed as a luxury. And so those are things we have now in our planning, the 425, that we may think about doing differently. And then the last one looks at what the debt assessments, what the overall, I'm sorry, the overall town assessments would be. I've held the percentage share of each town flat. I think we were within about 0.1%, and we were investigating a couple students to see. There was, the preliminary data we have comes from School Administrative Assistance. We want to get the official data that gets submitted to DESI, so we need to do some research, but it's going to be very close. It might shift a tiny bit. But we are looking at assessment increases that we're projecting of 3.6% in Concord and Carlyle for FY '26. Again, this is a projection, not a budget. And then 3.2, 3.3, 2.3, and 3.0.
And these breakdowns are, there's a rate by number of students, or this is just a fixed in the agreement?
It's based on number of students.
So it's based on the October 1 number of the budget you're building? So it's a pretty unique agreement to have it that cleanly of a formula in real time like that? There's other ways to do it that we won't get into, so.
Yeah, for sure.
So that October 1 number is really important. What I will do is work to update, what we got pretty good at was putting together the enrollments for the K8s in both communities and starting to help foreshadow what could happen down the road to the assessments, and I think it's time to update that, so you all have a five-year view of if there's swings coming to either direction. It's nice to see them coming, Carlisle's, and there's some big ones the last couple, last few years.
We just saw the numbers recently, and I think for the most part, their class size is really small, with the exception of one, maybe two, but really.
And we've got some declined enrollment here, too, but we also have a big apartment complex coming online in a couple of years, and a big housing complex, so.
Yeah.
So anyway, we'll at least get the current numbers together because this committee's benefited, the towns have benefited by at least knowing where they are.
Sure.
Ahead of time.
And I think two years ago, Carlyle did a really good job with that when they had that big swing, and they were like, no, we knew it was coming. I mean, they were really on top of that, so.
Prepared for it, yeah.
Absolutely. Still room. All right, let's move on to.
I do have some feedback. I went through the memo, and I do see some misses in our part. So, and I wish we discussed this as a committee because I don't think some of them are reasonable requests from the finance committee. So the one, the first one is the five-year projections on a per-student basis. That's nearly impossible. It's a memo here from the finance committee.
The finance committee's on your memo.
Got it. So to do that on a per-student basis for five years forward means we'd have to have a great crystal ball with enrollment, up and down. That's just not reasonable, so I think that's okay, that we do not do that. They did ask for the past five years per student. I think we can do that. We can have it ready for Thursday, but I think we should have it ready once, you know, going forward. I think we should provide that. So five years back per student spending, that's easy math, right? The other thing they asked for was student enrollment. So I went back and looked at the NESDEC projections from 2014, and they projected Concord-Carlyle High School would be at 1491. So I don't think that they really are that reliable. I think the much more important thing to do is for us to get together with the planners of both towns and figure out what the impact, when we think these new buildings are coming online, and what we think the projected impact was, because the Muse slash Prescott was a big miss on our part. We projected very little enrollment impact and was easily 100 students. So I think we know it's, it is going to have an impact, both of those.
By we, you mean the town. The town didn't predict that we'd have as many students.
In the district.
In the district.
Yeah, they said, nah, don't worry about it.
That was about 10 years ago?
Yeah.
10 years ago.
Yeah, it was definitely a spike. Not all. I think there was other factors as well. I do think there will be some movement in real estate in Concord and Carlyle, but I'd also like to see enrollment projections for not only Concord-Carlyle, but Boston because that's gone down significantly, which has also impacted our enrollment, and not in even a worse way. So the other thing is they asked for metrics, success and actual performance on those metrics. So if we choose not to do that, I think we should just decide not to provide those.
I think there was a section in there that talked about.
I was just going to say, I think that's in there.
Our strategic plan and how we have a lot of metrics involved in that.
Right, but I think they wanted to see specifics, right?
I mean, we talk about metrics all the time.
I know, I know. But I'm just saying, we, you know, that's good enough. We just, we didn't do any specific, like, data, you know, here's this, 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 and this, and the changes in our presentation to you tonight.
So I think, if I'm hearing you right, because I'm just making some notes, the five-year retrospective, yes, we can do that.
Right.
Right, this is, I'm just reiterating what you said. Five-year projection is difficult. I think when it comes to the success metrics, just, again, I think my knee-jerk reaction is we are going through that, and especially when it comes to metrics with the goals we've done for this year. The goal is to try to hyperlink as much as we possibly can, otherwise the document will be like 50 pages just for that.
I'm not saying we.
No, no, but just giving you my two cents. And then I think for enrollment, I think what Dr. Hunter said in what they just covered is we do get with the two towns, as well as look at the MECCO numbers, and just come up with kind of a truth in the next one. Because I know we've seen numbers, like I said, from a Carlyle perspective, and they're not increasing greatly, and they're not predicted to be, like, our incoming kindergarten, I think, is 52 kids are coming, are existing kindergarten, which is smaller than it was a couple of years ago now. And that's even with housing coming in. Now, we also have the MBTA initiative coming, so I think, there's a lot of moving pieces. I think we just, we can look at that as a separate thing, and we can maybe look at that, you know, as an agenda item at some point in the next few meetings.
We'd like to see also five-year, the trends from five years to this year.
Sure.
Because I do think we have some room because our enrollment is down, right, in our schools. Not a ton. And then how much space do we have at CMS, blah, blah, blah? You know, it's just, I think people are starting to get anxious that, do we have any extra space, and, you know, how much?
And that's in some of the studies, correct? I mean, isn't that in what Bob just kind of went through? I obviously can't participate in the CPS one, but I think I listened, I think I heard. So, and then for CCHS, the same thing, we just want to do a study on the space, and that's built in, I think.
Right, so the enrollments are down some from even in my tenure. You will have some room to absorb to a point, and I guess the question is, where's the point, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You know, and what kind of class sizes do you want to have is going to end up being part of that discussion, because that's where you're going to absorb kids, is not necessarily adding teachers, lots and lots of teachers, especially at the high school.
They don't have rooms to put them in.
We don't necessarily have rooms. We might have a little space at the elementaries, but I'm talking like a classroom, not extraordinary, because you're down two or three sections at each elementary, no, at Thoreau and Alcott, not at Willard.
Yeah.
So some of it's about class size, some of it's about other things, like, there isn't a thing to talk about there, it's a big-picture thing to talk about there.
Sure.
So we can get actuals to enrollments, and some projections of, I'm not even going to say the word, we can show you actuals of the kids that are in the seats now, and as we roll them up, what it looks like over the coming years, but projecting what those numbers are, I don't know that we're in a good space.
Yeah, exactly. So I think for the lens that you're asking about, for capital planning and everything, I think if I heard from Bob and others, we have studies in motion, or at least planned. We can do the three-year projections, and I think that's what all of us are saying around here, is the five-year is a stretch for us on a number of different metrics, not just enrollment. But is that the consensus that everyone else has heard? Really, three years, we feel like we have a good handle on five as a stretch.
I just think we could, yeah, if we could just get more information of what's coming online that we know about, which we do know about, and how many units, and how many projected, I mean, Elizabeth Hughes, that's her job.
Yeah, I'm actually, I had an email from her yesterday with some of that information.
Yep, okay.
And the thing with the three-year projections, this year, it's quite easy to do the three-year projections because we're at the beginning of a contract.
Correct.
And the conclusion of the contract, doing even a three-year projection.
Be difficult.
Becomes exceedingly complicated when we are entering a bargaining year. I think that has been the main point of tension, that for whatever reason, we just, it's challenging to communicate that.
Agreed.
Why it's detrimental for us to share that information.
Agreed. I think a lot of us are.
Today, this year's great. We gave you the three years.
Yeah.
I think history is almost as important to find out what's been happening.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all around the table saying very similar things about having a good handle on three years, five years is hard. I think, to your point, I mean, I think some of this is, all of us probably want a little bit of a different lens on metrics and numbers. What you want may be a little bit different from what I want, a little different. I want, a little different from what Tracy wants, et cetera, et cetera. But I think in the end, our goal is to paint a clear picture without overwhelming the audience. And I think the approach this year of doing a hyperlink to kind of best cases is going to, I honestly think is going to put us in a better place, because the information's going to be more digestible. But it's good feedback, and we should keep on revisiting that. I think the enrollment and the studies are good to consider.
Okay.
Did I capture that, Cynthia?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway.
And we do typically share the, one of the things was the per-people expenditures, we do typically share that in our budget presentation. So it hasn't changed since we last presented it, but we can include that in the budget presentation and share that with the Finance Committee. It'll be a five-year trend.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Where are we? Are we at the capital plan?
Yep.
Yep, capital plan items.
So just, you know, this is different than what we went through with CPS. Those of you who are part of that are listening in on it. You know, we're at an inflection point at the high school. The building's just reaching 10 years old. So we are not in a place where we need that big comprehensive view of the building. It's coming in a couple of years, probably. But right now, you're really just focused on the large projects that have been on the radar here for a bit. So Bob did a nice job of outlining those projects and just putting, you know, updates as to where we are in them. And I think that's for you to discuss now and what, and how you want to share that. I think my other ask is a little guidance in what I'm taking to the Concord Town Manager discussion I'm going to have on capital, because I would name one thing we didn't do a great job. We, like all of us, didn't do a great job of, we went to too many Finance Committee meetings without talking about the amenities building, for example, while we talked about CPS capital, and we'd leave the room and not have it come up. And then late in the budget and warrant process, we were kind of all scrambling. So I need feedback on what you want me to share with her as part of the big picture, because it is a, and frankly, not just to the Concord Town Manager, but to the Carlisle leadership, too, for sure.
All right.
Do I need to present anything? I mean, I'm kind of lining out there.
Just going to ask, I don't know how much.
Maybe we could just, I mean, we've all seen it. Do we want to just see if there are any questions, or?
I'm going to ask a simple question before, because I know the amenities building's not as easy. The track is on there, but is that another one that we are seeking public funding?
No.
No, we're hoping to privately fund on that.
What is, what are we going to say on Thursday night? That's my question.
Yep. That's my question, too, because I haven't been as close to it.
The track I think is easier, and Brian, Alexa, and I met.
Yeah, we'll give you an update on our meeting.
Okay.
Perfect, okay, we can do that.
Or we can do it now, if that seems more appropriate.
Yeah, you know, that might make sense. So I think on the, if we look at Item D under Discussion and Actions, it's School Committee Goals Tracking. We really only had one that was due between now and the next meeting, which was actually the, appoint School Committee Leads, Alexa, Tracy, and Brian, to identify grant opportunities and ways to offset the cost of the building, the amenities building, and honestly, other projects happening by end of October 2024, and start reporting out monthly. So this would be your, your first report out, and it does kind of intersect. So why don't we do that?
Yeah, sure. So we met on Friday. We essentially accomplished everything we sort of set out to do, and I can go through those things with you. The track is obviously more simple, so we are reaching out to Simon Cataldo, Carmen Gentile, and Mike Barrett to talk about if there are any grants. I've already reached out to Simon. He and I connected this morning for quite a bit. So we're looking at any sort of like recreational grants that can be championed by any of those guys at the state level. Then we talked about sort of resurrecting CC at Play. The, we each agreed that we were going to get five sort of names of people we thought could either spearhead that initiative as the previous board seeks to pass the baton. I actually have three commitments already.
She was very successful today.
She was very successful today.
And I have to say, Julie's tracking document has really helped us all.
This is very motivational.
Because it really lit a fire under us.
We like it.
So we do like it. And the Select Board likes it, too. They reported on that this week.
So, so we're working with that, and then we're going to shortly set up a meeting with the previous head of CC at Play, who's just having a little bit of a family.
Sure.
Stuff going on right now. And then with respect to the amenities building, we were going to also talk with those same representatives about ADA municipal grants. I talked to Simon this morning. There are many. They are currently open. He is trying to ascertain, sometimes they might exclude new construction. So his aide Kyle is working on identifying which grants we would be eligible for.
And I did take a look back, and some of the things are like, I think about, you know, your Alcott situation there, like, there are things like curbing and ramps. They're smaller-scale projects, so they typically give to about, I don't know, like 15 to 20 towns every year. But it's worth it. Concord is not on the list for the past, like, five years. Carlisle is. I'm not sure what they got it for. It didn't say what they got it for, but they received a grant in 2024.
I think, yeah, I have an idea, but.
Okay.
Not for today.
So, so that's sort of, those were our sort of deliverables.
That's great.
And.
CPC in Concord opens in February of 2025 and stays open until September. And in Carlisle, I think it opens in January? Did we talk about January?
I think that sounds about right, and I've got the, sort of started the question just in terms of, how does this work with Carlisle and the high school? So.
Right.
There's research being done, but no answers yet.
So I think as you're finding this information out, and we're hearing about the capital plans and even just the guidelines, but more through the capital lens, why don't we take the information that you're gathering, get an update on what we think is actually things that we're going to put our, put our name in the hat for? And then also look at the timeline and the contingencies that Bob's laid out, and maybe we can revisit this either at the 19th meeting or even before that, the one we have on 7th or so?
6th.
Yeah, I mean, just a quick update on, Bob talked today to Gail Associates, who's doing the design of the amenities building. They'll be ready to bring you three, four options.
Mm-hmm.
Four options on the 19th.
Of November.
Of November, which will have estimated costs associated with them. Why don't you be the good news bearer?
We pretty, what we're hearing is it's going to be less than $2 million.
It's great news.
We thought so.
Definitely.
Plumbing code changed in January of last year and requires less bathrooms for different athletic, specific, specific to athletic facilities. There's college, there's high school level, and so, and professional. So specifically bathrooms, we would need the variance for the sinks, it seems like. They didn't change the code.
So you're going from 23 to 17.
It's January 24, right?
Yes, last year.
This year, it's 24, right?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking, we're almost at 25.
Yeah, this year.
In his world, it's 20 next year.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So you're going from 23 bathrooms.
To 17.
17.
Yeah.
And we still need a waiver for the sinks, so we still have a plumbing board exercise to do.
Can I ask you guys a follow-up question? On the, see, first of all, that's awesome. Great, great news. On the grants, the CPC grants for both towns, is your proposal that we would apply, like, January, at some point in the next cycle? And then for amenities or just for track or for both?
I don't think.
The track is going to take some sickening.
Need a project.
Time to fundraise. I mean, we're, so I do not see a track coming online. For years, I think this is going to take.
Time.
Multiple years to fundraise. And as the fundraising, once, there are professionals out there that I've worked with in the past with fundraising where they'll tell you, like, once you hit a certain number, you know the project is going to come to fruition. If you can raise whatever percentage it is, and it's some formula, once I think you get to that level of fundraising, that's when you would trigger, like, looking for grants and actually applying for them, because then you know, you're there and it's going to work. So I will.
Or you know what you have, and you want to close the gap.
Right.
You know, you might say, you know, we're almost there.
But you do it earlier than that, I think, is the idea.
So what about the amenities building? Would you?
I think, I mean, to me, if costs are going down, and there's, you know, we've had multiple meetings with the Disability Coalition. We, you know, Simon seems to think that there's some money out there in the world. I think, you know, depending on what that looks like, and hopefully we'll have some more information before the 19th, I think it will be dependent on that.
Yeah, okay, because I was thinking of the timeline perception.
Getting back to what do we need to do tomorrow on Thursday night?
Yeah. Oh, true. Can we, we can leave it as a possibility.
I think it's a little highlight of what you've done here, you know, what we've talked about here.
But also, Thursday isn't focused on.
No, it's not on capital.
It's not on capital.
On Capitol.
November 18.
Right, so we don't need to have a long.
This is interesting.
Yeah, no, this is, I think this is getting closer to the 19th.
Yeah.
My, my suggestion, Alexa, as I briefly spoke, and I think what would be really helpful, based on what you just mentioned, is having like a timeline view of when the grants are coming. Like, even including what you're, like, we're going to get a proposal or some estimates, so to speak. All the, not, I won't say internal, I'm sorry, it's my corporate jargon. But the conversations that we're having between all the different committees, and I think we need to see those things on the timeline and what the dependencies are to meet the different fiscal years, because I think that would be helpful. Obviously, like, idea of like when grants are due, and then, you know, even the, like, the capital look back that we've talked about of things that, just understanding what we've done in the past. So that way we can have one view. I think that was, that worked well with FinCom with doing, having, getting ready for the guideline conversation with headwinds and tailwinds. I think similar approach with this. But I think the timeline with this, it's like hard to keep track of everything, so I think that would be great, because even what you just mentioned with the track, I'm like, that's a great point. Might be three, four years out, given what you're talking about.
Let's go to.
Let's go to, two years. Yeah, don't quote.
We do have to have the meeting scheduled, right?
So much of why this was on the agenda for tonight isn't about Thursday night. It's about the conversation that we have to have with the Town Manager and CFO. So we'll, we'll take what you talked about and share that.
Yep.
Is that scheduled at this time?
We emailed them today to set that up.
Do you think it'll be before or after our next meeting?
They, from what we understand, they're collecting from their department heads until the 31st, so I don't know if it'll be before your next meeting.
Good to know.
I just also want to point out the Capital Stabilization Fund in the memo. For, I'm just going to say, my observation is that our capital process seems like nails on a chalkboard right now.
The region.
And that it would give Dr. Hunter and I some flexibility if we had a Capital Stabilization Fund. Of course, we'd bring things to the committee. It'd also give us some flexibility to not have to go to the towns for small projects. Like, we're going to have HVAC units that are going to die on the roof, and it's going to be 40, 50,000 that we can't fit into the operating budget. We need some flexibility. We need to think of a way to do it. We need to work with the towns on how do we fund it. And there's different ways. And we'll talk about that during the budget process, but I think it would be a mistake not to pursue that.
We did have one with the old CCHS.
Yeah, we do have it. We just don't have any money in it.
Money in it. So a way to, like, money into it.
I suggest you go to Partners in Rhyme with these.
That's great. All right. So we'll definitely have to, we'll cover this at the, at the next meeting for sure, even if it's just an update. Is everyone okay if I move on to the goals tracking? I think we just, just covered it, but just to wrap it up with a bow. I'm glad everyone liked the tracking. I think it's just helpful to understand, like, what's coming due. So I know we talked about it before, but we don't need to pull up the actual document. That was the only one. But next month, we can just go through it and see if there's anything that we still have concern about, or if something's off track. And we'll do that next, at the next meeting. All right, conference, MASCE Conference. You want to cover this one?
Oh, yeah, sure. Gladly take volunteers.
Pretend to get busy.
We need a representative to go to the conference.
Anyone going or no? Well, that's what the discussion.
I feel like everyone went last year. No, no one wants to go?
So the MASCE Annual Conference is on November 6th to 9th on the Cape. It's actually a really, as much as we're all, like, looking, not making eye contact, it's a really, really good conference.
No, no, once you're there, it's just coordinating.
It's the, right. So it's Wednesday. It says till Saturday, but really it ends on Friday afternoon. The agenda has posted. I was just looking through it, and it's really, some really good presenters, some really good panels. So we're, I don't think we're required to send a delegate.
Nope.
But we can send a delegate. We have in the past. And so if anybody wants to go, one thing we have done in the past is just go, there's like a, Friday is like a full-day conference. That's what, I know Cynthia and I went to that last year. It was, I really learned a lot. I think I took like half a notebook of notes, but yeah, I don't know. Is anybody interested in going?
I'm interested in going. I have work commitments that make it near impossible when it's on the Cape. If there's a virtual component, I can maybe do something on Friday, but there's not.
I think it's going to move next year.
They're going to move.
They are putting, I know last year, they put their panels online after the fact, so you could watch them, but that's, that's a big er commitment, honestly.
Well, if there's nobody going, we don't need to vote, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
If anyone's scheduled changes.
Yeah.
There is a big vote coming up. That's at this conference about MCAS, so.
Yep.
Well, they actually have taken a position on it as well.
No, no. This conference is voting to eliminate MCAS and have a, to try something else.
MASCE?
Yes, at the conference.
Oh, that's what, oh, okay. That's, that's interesting, because.
That's where, last year, they voted to have this ballot initiative, essentially. Yeah.
Okay.
So Mariano and I forget the other person are already pushing back to say that they are not going to adhere to the ballot if it passes. Question two.
Yeah, I saw some of that. All right. Well, I'm going to keep to this. Who, does anyone want to go? And anyone can go.
I think you can still get the early bird pricing, too, if you really want to go. But I can't go.
Okay.
The district would cover the cost, so it's not.
Yep.
I mean, it's, Carlisle has a day and a half off that week already.
Yep.
Well, so.
Yeah, that's the other challenge.
Any vacation to the Cape.
Oh, well.
It's not required.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Well, if anyone's scheduled changes, let us know when we're, we'll help you to sign anyone up.
Yeah. We've had extraordinary participation in the past. We don't need to be perfect every year.
Yeah, okay.
All right. All right, well, that's, that's it. All right, so now we can move to public comment. As a reminder, our public comment period will be a period of 20 minutes. This is a meeting in the public and not with the public, so the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you're in the room and you would like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me, and you'll be called to speak. That's not it. This is it. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. When called to speak, please state your name and address before you speak. We will go every other, starting with a comment in the room, and then taking comment on Zoom. And you'll have a time limit of three minutes. I have one sheet up here. Does anyone else have a comment sheet that they want to bring up? All right, Mike Williams.
Thank you. Let me begin with a story. Characterizes my experience as a black person in this country. If I stand in front of my property, most everyone, from sanitation worker to public official, views me as a workman. Now, being a workman is perfectly honorable, but what is it about this culture that can only see me as a workman, but not as a homeowner? I think this is a consequence of the corrosive effect of our nature's perspective on race. Concord likes to think that this doesn't happen here, but I can assure you that it does. This corrosive effect permeates nearly everything in our society. Consider our October 8th School Committee meeting. I saw innocent, courageous students unable to grant the same acknowledgement to one person of color participating in the evening's exercise. As the only black person in the audience, is it not my right, is it not my responsibility, to point out this perception to those people that are in charge of forming the hearts and minds and minds of the next generation? How can I possibly expect things to improve if I don't impart my perspective? Our superintendent scolded me for discreetly imparting my views. I would remind you all that informative critique is quite different from criticism. I then watched the just concerns of our Boston families as voiced by the Metco PTG chair regarding the program's management structure, its direct turnover, Metco student census, and achievement, I watched all of their concerns be ignored. Then I witnessed the discussion on the 2024 Youth Risk Benefit, Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The, the data on the students deemed higher risk, the transgender students, non-binary, non-heterosexual students, brought our regional chair, chair to, to tears. Only subsequently did I find that the assembled educators omitted discussion on similarly troubling data covering Hawaiian Pacific Islanders, Middle Eastern American students, Black and African American students, with only two student cohorts identified in their data as higher risk. Why would the data on this one cohort of students be omitted from display or discussion? I was appalled. I witnessed all of this in just one meeting. So I ask you, how can I trust you to do the right thing by me and people like me in this community, when you've clearly demonstrated that you don't acknowledge wide swaths of this community? I, along with others in our community, are willing to work with you to improve, but we challenge you to do better, and I demand that you do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, any questions on Zoom?
That hand, I think that hand's been up the whole meeting, so you could ask it.
Kate.
I can promote, if she declines, we'll know. She's not interested. She's not responding, so I'm.
Okay.
Not sure.
Are there any other comments in the room? All right. All right, we have the consent agenda next. The surplus CCHS Science Department printer warrants, you can see those outlined under 1, 2, 3, and 4. Miss anything?
No, that's it, all warrants.
Payroll.
I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written on the October 22nd agenda.
Second.
I'll second, sorry.
You're welcome.
How wonderful.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, moving on to correspondence. Anything from the CPS side?
I think it was all, there was only a couple into the region, I don't think there was anything into CPS this week.
I don't think, I, I'm losing track of the, the weeks.
You got a letter into, that the superintendent took care of about lanyards for the.
Correct.
NII students who are visiting.
Correct, right. I think that was it, I don't remember.
And a response from, just the one from the Metco PTG about her public comment.
That's correct, and I did respond to that. All right, great, anything else, any other correspondence? Okay. All right, at this time we have the superintendent chairs and liaisons update.
And a request for our goals, you posted.
Oh, yeah, so that is, sorry, I was thinking that was the week before, so I will say, yeah, in a lot of instances, some of the questions that we've been receiving, I'll just say this at a more of a macro level, a lot of the things are covered in the goals, so for example, we have a lot of questions that have come through on metrics, and making sure that we're, we're going through those, YRBS is one of the first examples of that, where we're going through it. That's why we also share the information, so there's, I think the YRBS is 88 pages, some of the information that we're gonna go through, even with special education, we covered some of that tonight, so this is gonna be an ongoing benchmarking, that is why we're gonna go through the goals every, every time we meet, even if like tonight is fairly quick, just to make sure we're on track and we're doing what we said we were gonna do, so those are there. And then, yeah, I think a couple of the League of Women voters and a few others asked for the goals, so we've sent those out in either PDF or JPEG form.
And we posted them online as well.
Correct. They're posted. Yep. Okay, so those, that's correspondence, thank you for pushing me, I was thinking that was the week before. Superintendent chairs and liaisons update, do you wanna go in reverse order for the liaisons? Tracy, wanna start?
Sure, sure, okay. DEI Commission is supposed to meet tomorrow, I reached out to the chairs, because it looks like they didn't post for tomorrow, they posted for Thursday, so their meeting is on Thursday at 5:00, and it is just to elect their, I think just to elect their chairs, it doesn't look like anything else is on the agenda, so I'll provide clarity after that meeting. Select board meeting last night, the capital requests are due on October 26th, I think I have that date right, and then on November 18th, the recommendations will go to select board December 16th, they're gonna follow up with the select board, FinCom, and school committee, so that will be like a joint meeting of all of us on December 16th. There was some discussion about cell coverage, which I know we always find exciting here, the, and what's happening now at Emerson Umbrella, and it does impact specifically, I think it would be Alcott and maybe a portion of the high school, which is the only reason I really talk about cell coverage. It is not moving forward at Emerson Umbrella right now, I guess they put the RFP out and they had to, it did meet the minimum requirement, so they have to put it out again, and then the RFP for the cell tower at the landfill's been posted, and hopefully that might help the high school. They are looking for feedback from all the chairs on the liaison roles and how those are going, so if you have any feedback, give that to Andrea Fountain. Is it Fountain or Fontaine, I'm not sure.
I think it's Fountain.
I think it's Fountain, okay. Andrea Fountain, I know Wendy's online tonight, she, she presented to select board about our goals and our tracking, they all really loved our tracking documents, so I think we're gonna see that from the select board at some point. And the town meeting study committee, that was the other thing, and I think I'd sent you an email about that. There are two forms coming up, and I'm not sure that parents are always aware of that, I know in Carlisle, you're on the town meeting study committee.
Isn't it tonight?
One of them is tonight, right now, in person, and it's not being recorded, so the only other option you have is on Zoom, and so that, that's kind of a bummer that they have the same night as our meeting, but that's okay. So if there's any way we can get information to parents to fill out the survey, I think they're really looking for feedback, and I'm not sure that they're getting a lot of feedback from parents, I don't know, we'll find out.
I was gonna say, one, one suggestion, and Brian, I know you were a part of it, so I might lean on you, but we had, they came to our meeting last week.
I watched it, and it was excellent, and that's.
It was really helpful, because that's how you're gonna get more parents to participate.
And they were specifically looking for how do we engage parents more, so I don't know if it's the two of you reach out to the town meeting study committee, or.
See him at the chair's breakfast, we can.
Yeah, that might be helpful.
Don't you have your own town meeting study committee?
Yeah. Well, in Carlisle, they have a representative.
As a school committee representative.
They have a school committee.
Brian is on every committee.
But they have representation from the select board, the school committee, and the FinCom on their town meeting study committee, which we don't have that here, so I think it's important for us to kind of give some feedback, so that's just my feedback.
Yeah, that would be great, I know that the town committee studying, meeting, town meeting study committee has visited the DEI Commission requesting their feedback, so I know they are doing that here in Concord.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, I don't know if you wanna invite them to a meeting to get our feedback.
I know it's kind of out in some of the PTG like newsletters, because I've seen it in like my kids, which is good, I mean, that's a, I think parents read that, but there are certainly more things we can do.
And I think it's tricky, like at CCHS, I know that like on the PA side, because it's a Concord Town Meeting Study Committee, they don't post just Concord specific unless it impacts both towns, but. I'm just getting it out there to the world to participate in the town meeting.
Do you know when it closes?
It's in November, it's in November sometime, I think they have over 700 responses so far, so they're getting some good responses.
I just couldn't believe that the number in Concord of people who attend town meeting is like 10 or 11% of the population when the state average is 3.
It's actually not, because we, we discovered this at our meeting on Friday.
I was gonna say, that sounded like, like a huge number, okay.
It's way below that, so we have.
We have 14,000 registered voters in Concord, roughly, correct me if I'm wrong, Cynthia? About 14,000, and at most maybe we get 1,000 at a town meeting, if you look at the averages, but it's not 12%.
No, no.
I heard that number, and I was like, that is not.
Yeah, I think Carrie must have misspoke at the meeting, I think Carrie reported that or somebody, yeah, so that was wrong.
I know how you do your math.
We're like, hearing at 3%, so that's why it's a little bit more of a concern.
On a normal night, it's way below that.
Sometimes it's 300 people.
Right, middle final night.
Yeah, I need a quarrel.
And they actually have it, if you're interested in looking for it, they have it on the town website, for the past 10 years, they have the numbers of people that have attended town meeting.
Yep.
And the last like huge attended one was like back in 2013 with water bottles and the Doug Whitefield, so. So when there's high interest items, you get a large number, and then.
Then it crashes, yeah.
Still, what's interesting, that engagement was more, was more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who else has a liaison update? Thank you.
I was gonna ask, you brought up last about the, the MCI Concord Task Force does not have any school committee members, I would like to see us liaise with that committee.
Yeah.
I brought up the same thing, it was actually on my list of things to talk about.
I was going to mention that we, I would like to reach out to Mary and request that, but I wanted to bring that to this group before we did that.
I already requested it.
Yes. Alexa did after a select board meeting.
Especially if there's housing involved as well, so.
Well, it was actually after a finance committee meeting, the finance committee, and Eric wrote a letter to the editor this week or two ago, and so given that so much of it could impact the schools, I was very shocked that we don't have a representative.
So is everyone okay if Carrie were to talk to Mary about that and?
We can then have a chat about that.
Okay.
Even if it doesn't, it impacts the growth, it impacts so many facets of our community, and it's very complicated to say the least.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, okay.
We had a CMS BC meeting on Thursday, I guess, on budget, on schedule, which is good.
Yeah.
The student committee, there's a student middle school committee that is advising, and they came to our meeting, so it was pretty cool to see, and they had a walkthrough of the building, so.
That was the best, walking them through the building.
Yeah. Very cool.
Those pictures.
Awesome. Anything for me, Brian?
I guess just a quick one on the Carlisle Select Board side, coming off of a meeting two weeks ago where they got a five-year sort of financial forecast, and the headline was basically, you either have to find a way of decreasing costs or increasing revenue, no, huge surprise there.
Easy.
But this Thursday morning, I think it's on the agenda for 8:45 AM, they will actually be meeting to set fiscal year '26 goals, so I will be joining that one on Zoom to, to listen in, and that's Thursday morning, so ahead of the meeting plan for Thursday night.
Perfect. Okay, well, that's, that's great, and I think just from a liaison standpoint, I think one of the things just to check in on, we're not, we don't have to necessarily talk about it tonight, but maybe to bring to the, the next meeting, all of us obviously have different commitments outside of this group, whether they're personal, professional, or other volunteer commitments, if, if the weight is too great for what you're working on, please bring it to our attention, because we don't want anyone over, over liaising, you shouldn't put, if there's a word for that. Because I mean, I know, like, I know for me, chairing is one, is, is a lot of work, which is fine, but then, I know Brian and I both serve on Carlisle, I'm not looking for pity, but we serve, like, I serve on the CPAC there and have other subcommittee commitments in addition to what we do here, so it's gonna be a little bit daunting at times, so I know, like, Tracy, you have four meetings this week, so let's just try to.
Some weeks, they just all line up at the same time, and so I think it's perfectly fine, like, to call.
Call your backup.
Call your backup.
I am your backup for the, for a couple of those, and like, on those weeks, like, I'm happy to jump in.
Usually I realize it when the week's upon me, and I'm like, oh, wow, that was a three hour meeting last night, followed by another one tonight.
Yeah, followed by another one Thursday night.
That's why I say, just wanna say it publicly and out loud, like, if, that's happening a lot, and it's not just a one-off, let's maybe take a closer look at it, or maybe flipping the backup to the primary, et cetera.
Or just rotating, I'm happy to rotate with you too.
Okay, great. Dr. Hunter?
Great, thank you, just a few highlights that I think are worth sharing tonight. Tomorrow, we're in the conference season, so CCHS has already had their parent conference date, the middle schools is coming up, we're embarking on a new activity of student-led parent conferences at grade eight, so the kids will be hosting their parents with their home base advisor during the course of the day, reporting out on all their different classes, and really taking ownership of, of that discussion with their family, so we're really excited, this was a teacher-led initiative from the eighth grade team at CMS, and we're just excited to hear how this goes, it's been well received, it's very different as parent to sign up for a conference, they're not gonna travel and try to get to so many different teachers, they're gonna have one conference. Logistically, that allows the schedule to accommodate every family, where when we booked sixth and seventh grade in the typical format, we have 35 families who got boxed out of the schedule already, so we're excited to report back to you about how that goes, it's been, been an exciting preparation process. Tomorrow, and kudos to Shelley, tomorrow's a district-wide PD afternoon, so we have a really rich set of opportunities for faculty, there are choices there, but they're a little more contained in terms of scope, as to much more focused on some of our initiatives and goals, whether it be at the building level, the department level, or the district level, so very content-focused in some cases, whether it be math at the high school, or early literacy, trauma, on and on, so I've shared that list with all of you, we're excited to get that day going tomorrow and get the feedback on whether some of our goals for professional development are starting to actualize in terms of just being a lot more targeted and correlated with what the efforts are that we're trying to impact in classrooms. I was able to attend the Metco Leadership Conference a couple, about 10 days ago, all the districts were primarily represented, I attended along with Katie Stahl, Matt Lucy, and the current Metco leaders, Malindi, Andre, and Solange, it was a really great day, we spent a lot of time as a collective Metco community updating ourselves on where we are in Metco 2.0, there's a blueprint, and a set of commitments is the choice word, which I think is fantastic, the consultants were there, those 13 commitments really align with our DEIB strategic plan, it was really telling at how closely aligned they are, I was asked to serve on a panel so that I could share out the two things that we were asked to share was the derogatory language policy, which I realize maybe not all of you are familiar with, two years ago-ish, we built a really robust policy as to expectations for what words would be used in our schools and what wouldn't, and then also supported teachers as they brought in diverse texts and needed support in how to manage those words when they showed up in primary sources or certain literature, and we've come a really long way in both, and then I also shared out the bias reporting system and the Google form and all of that, and had our, I didn't know, and Millie asked me to do the panel that I would then host two breakout groups afterwards, but they were well-attended as well, where other districts came over and were able to ask questions and take our resources back with them, so it was a great, really rich day, we were at Gillette Stadium, which is a nice little perk, great photo out on the field, yeah. And then lastly, just wanted to update you on the shelter situation, again, I think, you know, we're gonna be one of the long-term shelters here, that just feels really obvious to me, we're one of the biggest ones at 85 active rooms, and because we're doing a great job, both as a community and including a wide range of diverse families, many Haitian immigrants, supporting those families and welcoming them, I'll, you know, be really proud of the work the schools have done in terms of that same work. We have now enrolled about, we're at 51 kids today that have enrolled, and we're transporting another 10 back to school of origin, 37 of those, don't hold me to 37, high 30s are at Willard in those classrooms, primarily grades K and 1, and what is happening now is the rooms are starting to turn over, which is what the state's asked for, is to, well, and it's a great, the families are getting housing, so that's, that's fantastic, and it's adding to a little bit of what we're doing, the kids have rights under McKinney-Vento if they get housing in another district, to stay here for the rest of the year if they choose, and we then bust co-share costs to bust them back, so those numbers are only gonna go up for the rest of this year until the reset happens as the school year closes, so we're thrilled for the kids that they get to stay, and it's adding a little bit more to our spokes to keep track of with more transportation needs and things like that, so.
And none of that transportation is, why can't I think of the word?
Covered.
Covered.
Oh, it'll all be subsidized.
It will be subsidized.
100% will be subsidized.
To both the districts.
It's got the lag time to it, but we now have monies in the budget to front it, so we're in fine shape there, and all the kids that are enrolled are still $104 per day, with the caveat that I should mention that the legislature's only approved that through December 31st, so I also reached out to Simon and asked how that was going, and Kyle wrote me a nice note back saying they were certainly talking about it, so I would be stunned if it's not going to be furthered, and they just haven't done it yet, but we definitely wanna keep an eye on that, but, you know, the labor of love continues with the shelter population that we've been able to really welcome here, and just kudos to the community, there's all sorts of things that go on to support these families, and whether it's the thrift shop, or the foods that go in, or the, whatever the families are needing or being well-cared-for, and we're excited to have them, so I'll keep you posted, but the numbers are, you know, that's, we're up to almost. So I'll keep you posted, but the numbers are, you know, that's, we're up to almost 70 kids that we're serving one way, shape, or form.
And will you also let us know if that volunteer preschool kicks in again?
Yeah, we're needing a few more volunteers to get it off the ground, and part of what's happened, our family coordinator's bandwidth has stretched with all the numbers of kids, and she was really the lead there, so we're having to reevaluate at the moment to figure out how to get that up and running. It's feeling like a stretch at the time being. So those are my updates, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the biggest update that I have is we had the PTG's meeting, which is always really helpful to understand, we already socialized what our goals were, but then also just hearing what their goals were, and then just continuing to socialize what the needs are, so we did that. The Chair's Breakfast, so we also heard about town meeting study and a few other key areas. Being able to just update people on what we were focused on, getting the time with Eric from FinCom, Mary from Select Board, and others around the community is really helpful. And then again, I just, I keep coming back to the goals for two reasons, one, it's accountability, and two, just from the data standpoint. So I know we had YRBS a couple weeks ago, that's like, that's going to keep on going, even hearing from Angel, looking at the numbers that she's pulling from that. And if there's areas that we want to dive into, I mean, it's on our goals for a reason, we can keep on visiting if there are specific points in the data that we want to cover, we just have to get it on the agenda and go through it. But then also, we're going to start looking at other information. So for me, it's just about working with Carrie, working with Dr. Hunter and all of you, to just make sure that we're staying on track to what we committed to and not going too far off track, and getting, you know, set up for success for the next year.
Shelley's about to bring you all the academic data at your next meeting.
Correct.
And CAS, SAT, DIBELS, all of it.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of the focus. Like I said, we have a lot of things happening through the different subcommittees and liaisons, but I think, I see it as like our role is to really just make sure that we're focused on the right things, have student achievement first and foremost, and get the agenda with the topics we want to cover. So if we're not doing that, please, let's, you know, bring it up. Carrie?
Yeah, you covered most of my updates too, but the one, one update is, we had a really productive meeting, Alexa, Dr. Hunter, Bob, Julie and I, with FinCom members last week about the guideline, and it was a really, really productive conversation. It was really just about, it was really about process and understanding special education costs and formulas and how it all works, because obviously that is, there's a lot of nuance there, a lot of details too. So anyway, we, it was a really productive conversation that I think hopefully will set the stage for a really good meeting on Thursday. And then two just housekeeping updates, one is that we posted our meeting for Thursday, so I know I texted about this, but the meeting has been posted, so if you are able to come, terrific, we would love everyone to be there as able, and we can all participate in that conversation, given that it's public.
We can Zoom.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is on Zoom, that's true, good point, yeah.
Can I just ask a question on that? Because I think our agenda says 7:00 to 8:00, and the Carlisle FinCom says 7:30 to 8:30, so...
We posted a half an hour early because, well, we're going to do CPS as well, but also just to make sure we're there on time, and then there is, it will adjourn earlier than ours. Ours will adjourn earlier because they're having a Carlisle, Concord, FinCom joint meeting to discuss the idea of a joint guideline, and that is not with us, so we wouldn't be invited to that last portion of it. Does that make sense?
That's why there's... To participate.
Yeah. Probably 7:30 would be fine, Concord, Concord is likely to be a little bit earlier.
Carlisle FinCom's posted for 7:30, so I think that's your benchmark.
It's the Carlisle spaghetti.
I mean, all of this is like, this is all like an ish, like 7:00 to 7:30 is probably Concord, 7:30 to 8:00.
Okay, I'll aim for 7:30 then.
Concord, Carlisle, and then 8:00 to 8:30, the joint conversation. But again, who knows how it will actually play out?
All right.
Oh wait, one other note is that our next meeting is on Wednesday, not Tuesday because of Election Day. And then one other note, oh, we scheduled a policy subcommittee meeting, Cynthia, Dr. Hunter, and Julie, and myself, but I'm not going to say the date because I'm actually hoping we can change it.
Really working on scheduling a policy subcommittee meeting.
It's in November.
Last week, I did have to travel that day, so.
Okay, so good, I changed something around, so I will change it back.
Well, let's talk, if we could just stay back for like two minutes after the meeting and talk about it.
Yeah, that's fine, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
At all.
Moving pieces.
Sorry about that.
Well, that's great, thank you.
That's it.
I can't believe I forgot the FinCom one, that was a really good one. All right, so maybe just before I ask for a motion to adjourn, did everyone like the format for tonight so we could get the students up front? And everything, or is it okay if we continue like this?
I actually had a couple thoughts.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we should move public shocking, um, public comment up a little bit, and move liaison, like the superintendent, chairs and liaison, this thing, especially like Lori's updates are really good for the community when we lose people, so I would move those two up and everything else down.
I don't like the expression split the baby, but I would recommend we put Dr. Hunter's and the liaison's later.
I'm fine with that, too.
Sure, we can split those, yeah, no problem.
I like that.
That's great.
Okay, any other feedback?
I don't know how much they really interact.
No, it's just everyone kind of sharing out, yeah, but...
I think then people don't feel so pressured to rush their liaison reports because it's not blocking something else.
Sure. Yeah, and the public comment, I know in Carlisle, we have it later in the meeting, so people can listen to more of the meeting and then ask questions.
We used to, way back in the day, do you know, before and after.
Okay.
Not way back.
But our policy is...
No, no, I know, I'm saying...
No, I think, our meetings are long enough.
I know.
But does it say when? It just says 1.
What?
I think it just says 1. In the policy, there's like a suggested agenda too, but it says suggested, so it doesn't matter.
Correct.
But I like moving the, a lot of school committees do the consent agenda at the end.
Yeah, just makes more sense.
I would still keep public comment like...
Yes.
Like I would still keep students and presenters first to the extent possible, like we could have still kept Justin first.
Yes.
Whatever, anyway, we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's leave.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Oh, let's see, later, just adjourned, so.
Alexa doesn't believe in adjournment motions.
I thought, I thought I had to ask for it.
I know.
All right.
Oh.
There you go.